Okay. Good evening. This regular board meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by the state law. I just want to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just want to ask that you turn off your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so. We just really appreciate the time that you've taken to join us during this very busy season and very busy time and for your interest in Waco ISD. Okay, up next, we have a special performance.
Giddy up, jingle horse, pick up your feet. Jingle around the clock. Fix and weeple and the jingling beat. That's the jingle bell rock.
Thank you, thank you to our amazing Hillcrest Elementary Showtime Company and our directors, Mrs. Paula Hoover, Sarah Weatherly, and Rebecca Braswell for this amazing performance. It is my honor to welcome to the podium our City of Waco Mayor Pro Tem Josh Borderud for a special proclamation.
Thank you. Our Mayor Dylan Meek sends this proclamation. I, Dylan Meek, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Waco, Texas, do hereby proclaim December 15th, 2022, as Paula Hoover Day in the City of Waco. Now, do you have a few more paragraphs to read, too? But I urge the people of Waco to join with city council, city staff, and me in recognizing Paula Hoover for 30 years of exemplary service at Hillcrest Professional Development School in Waco ISD. Paula Hoover earned her bachelor's degree from William Jewel College in Missouri and her master's degree from Tarleton State. In 1985, she began her teaching career at La Vega ISD. In 88, she started as the music specialist at Lake Waco Elementary in Waco ISD. And in 1993, she was hired as the music specialist at Hillcrest Professional Development School, where, in partnership with Baylor University, she joined the team that would transform teacher training and provide an enhanced learning experience for Waco ISD students. Mrs. Hoover is the last remaining original faculty member of Hillcrest PDS. And we, hopefully for a few more decades to come. In the past three decades, she has nurtured a love of music and theater in her students. Her former students have won accolades at the intermediate and secondary levels and have studied music, theater, and musical theater in colleges and universities across the nation. Her colleagues in music education frequently seek her guidance and her wise counsel. Mrs. Hoover was an integral part of the team that founded the Showtime Theater Troop in 1996, now known as Showtime Company, and her award-winning music memory teams are the envy of her peers. While touching the lives of countless students through music, she earned a graduate degree and raised three wonderful girls with her husband Carl. In her fourth decade of inspiring the children of Waco, Paula Hoover's impact in elementary music education has no equal in our community. In testimony whereof, witness my hand in the seal of the City of Waco this 15th day of December, year of our Lord, 2022, or Paula Hoover Day, as it's better known.
behind Jeremy Davis, who's the tallest and biggest, tallest, maybe 6'6". But, so the voice behind is me. And I just, I really wanted to just take a moment and just say that was absolutely beautiful. I mean, just literally brought tears to my eyes, and I'm just so thankful. It's again, to connect to the purpose of why we do what we do. And so with that, as they're kind of funneling out for everyone else who is here, I would just, was wondering if you could just, please, just pause with me as we just take a moment of time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and meditation. So we're just going to take a couple moments. Thank you so much. And now we will move on to item number five, special recognition. Oops. Pledge of Allegiance, so sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Special recognition. Good evening, again. Our pledge leaders tonight. Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of December, Kaylee Moya and Annie Ecker from Tennyson Middle School were selected for this honor. Kaylee is in the eighth grade and loves math. She likes to sing in the choir, cheer, and play volleyball. Kaylee is in the National Junior Honor Society and enjoys baking and photography. When she gets older, she would like to be a nurse. Thank you to her mother, Michelle Moya, for sharing your amazing daughter with us. Annie is also in the eighth grade. Her favorite subject is English, and she participates in choir, theater, volleyball, and soccer. Annie enjoys reading and wants to be a journalist. Thank you to her father, Jeremy Ecker, for sharing your wonderful daughter with us. Next, we have a much awaited recognition for our Dave Campbells Texas Football Honors football head coach. Dave Campbell, Texas Football Honors, one coach in each classification with the Coach of the Week Award. Each coach recognized with this special honor typifies the best in Texas high school football. University High School head football coach Kent Laster was recognized by Dave Campbells Texas Football as 5A Coach of the Week during a very exciting 2022-2023 football season. According to Dave Campbells Texas Football, Coach Laster has "South Waco buzzing" as the Trojans improve to 3-3 on the season with a convincing 53-28 win over Flugerville. Congrats, guys. The win makes university two, at that time made university 2-0 in district play for the first time since 2012 and put Waco university high right in the middle of the playoff race. Congratulations, Coach Laster. We are so proud of you. I think we, we want to get a picture, and would you like your family included? Mrs. Laster and your lovely daughters, we're going to take a group picture. Coaching is a family sport, right, Coach? We're not quite done with recognizing our Trojans just yet. The University High School Football Trojans clinched a playoff berth for the first time since 2009 and ended the season as 5A Division II Bi-District Champions. The team's six wins this season are the most recorded since 2009. Here to accept recognitions are team captain, Johnse Foulbright, Najee Drakes, Paul Monreal, Ty Eric Bernal, and Jaywon Harris. Our district most valuable player, return specialist Mackay Sandoff. Offensive newcomer, as recognized by the district, Landon Smith. Defensive newcomer, Joseph Caballero. Defensive Lineman of the Year, Ty Wagner. First offense team, first-team offense offensive line, Paul Monreal, Ty Eric Bernal. Quarterback, Jashawn Magnet. Tailback, Najee Drakes. First-team defense tackle, Edgar Marquez. Outside linebacker, Jaywon Harris. Safety, Detral DeGrate, and Najee Drakes. Congratulations, gentlemen. We are so proud of you. And parents, after we get our photo, y'all are welcome to come up, any supportive parents that want to take another picture. Next, we have our Thespian National Qualifiers. Students participated in the Texas Thespian State Festival held in Grapevine, Texas in November. Texas Thespians is the largest chapter in the nation with over 600 troops representing over 1,600 middle schools and high school students. Students were able to meet their peers, attend workshops, and compete for a chance to qualify for Nationals. The following students scored a superior rating, which qualified them to compete at Nationals, which will take place this summer. From Waco High School, we have Lily Howell, Lydia Allen, Helen Goodman, Andrew Eggers, Deborah Hammond, Brianna Acevedo, Deasia Lee. Deasia Lee? Okay, nope. So moving on, from University High School, Terrell Thompson, Jamisha Pringle, Avion Anderson, Jordan Ward, Daisy Barco. Congratulations to all these students for this national achievement. Now for our Drums Along the Brazos recognition. Drums Along the Brazos is an annual drumline ensemble competition held at College Station High School that began in 2012. This year, the competition debuted the first solo competition category. University High School student Nick Ashby performed stickless and won an Outstanding Solist Award. He is the first student in the central Texas area to compete in and win this competition. Nick had only began playing this particular instrument four months prior to the completion, and he and his teacher, Mr. Curry, wrote the original tenor drum slow low. Congratulations. Moving on to staff. Waco ISD Parents as Teachers recently earned a prestigious endorsement from the Parents as Teachers National Center as a Blue Ribbon affiliate, making it one of the top-performing home-visiting affiliates within the Parents as Teachers International Network. The Waco ISD Parents as Teachers program includes home visits, group connections, child screenings, and introductions to community resources. The program equips parents with knowledge and resources to prepare their children for a stronger start in life and greater success in school. Waco ISD's Parents as Teachers program originated in the mid-1990s. The goal of the program is to prepare children and families for school entry and serve families with children who are not yet enrolled in school from prenatal to just before the preschool age. Being a Blue Ribbon affiliate affirms what we all know, that Waco ISD Parents as Teachers has a program of high quality and serving of their members in their home-visiting field, implementing the evidence-based Parents as Teachers model with fidelity. Families within Waco ISD attendance zones are positively impacted. The program completed their first quality endorsement and improvement process in 2016 and has maintained this Blue Ribbon status for six consecutive years. Anita Henderson and Paulie Ramos are here tonight to receive the Parents as Teachers recognition, along with Gwen James. Thank you so much for being here. For our community partner, each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for students with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. The recognition celebrates the theme of our 2022-2023 school year, Lead from the Heart, and acknowledges the impact that our community partners make in the lives of our students and staff. In December, the district is recognizing Pack of Hope. McLennan County Pack of Hope was founded by Jane Bounds and Cliff Reese on the idea of helping those in need. The program began in 2011 in attempts to erase child hunger in McLennan County. Today, Pack of Hope works with 17 school districts in McLennan County and nine Waco ISD schools. They provide eligible students in Waco ISD with bags of nutritious food from Friday through Sunday while they are not receiving meals in schools. The program has fed over 6,000 K-8 students between September and December of 2022. We are so grateful for Pack of Hope. Congratulations on this recognition. So if you want to look at Mary's camera first, please. Okay, one at me, please. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, we have, moving on to item number six, public comments on agenda item, we have several people who've signed up to speak. To one or more of the open meetings' agenda items this evening, the board encourages comments about open meeting agenda items from members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting, in accordance with the board procedures, will do so in accordance by law, board policy, and board rules. Board rules require that each speaker's comments pertain to any, to an open meeting agenda item unless adjusted by the presiding officer. Comments by each speaker will be no longer than three minutes. Comments by each speaker will be no longer than three minutes per time limit from the district's BED local. I will ask the Board Secretary, Mr. Davis, to be your timekeeper. Mr. Davis, please let any patron addressing the Board know when they have one minute left and when they've reached the end of their allotted time to speak. Up first, we have Judge James Lee.
Good evening to you. I'm here to follow comments on item 11B. And this is pertaining to the safety of the schools that you are building. I am the Justice of the Peace Precinct to McLennan County. Part of my job is to be available 24 hours a day, 365 days out of a year to perform inquest. An inquest is an investigation to determine the cause of death of someone who dies of multiple ways. And today, I am here to hopefully not have to perform mass fatality inquest on any one of your campuses. We trained for it, but I'm hoping that you can do whatever you can to prevent it. I've talked to several of you, and you informed me that you've done everything you can to secure the outside, preventing outsiders from coming in. Well, my concern is not about those that can get inside. On November 22nd, an individual who was employed by Walmart, a manager, was able to get past the doors and get into the break room and murder several of the employees and even a 16-year-old boy. So what is it that you're going to do to prevent someone who is a trusted individual that may have access to the inside? A student, a teacher, a custodian, a visitor? Someone that is trusted, that has a weapon? It doesn't have to be AK-47. It could be a 9mm. And without the protections in place, our staff, our children, our administrators, everyone's at risk. None of you have had to do what I've done. I perform inquests on babies, infants, teenagers, young adults and our elderly. And those images don't go away. You've never had to step over a puddle of blood to get to someone to determine how they died. I have. And it hurts. It hurts having to tell the mother or father he's not coming home. You can see him by law. You can see him, but you can't go with him because I have to sit him off for an autopsy. They don't go away. I can't sleep at night because of what I see. The images, they just don't go away. There's so many kids that I mentor, I coach, and I just, I don't want to have to get that call to come to any one of these schools because one of us is going to come. One of the JP's may have to come. I got you. So I'm pleading that you make changes to these plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Lee, for your comments. I, yeah, thank you. I know that you are heavily invested in the community and I appreciate your perspective.
Can I make a comment?
Mr. Grant, yes.
Just one point of clarification. I served as a pastor at Calvary Baptist Church for a really long time and have sat in the living room where folks have died with blood on the floor and stepped over their bodies and sat with parents that would never be able to see their kids again. So, yeah, we've had those moments and those are really terrible moments. But just wanted to make sure that it's a tragedy that we don't ever want to see, but unfortunately, some of us have seen it before.
What more point of clarification? I would just want to comment too. I've also had to go to the scene where we've lost some of our young people in the city and plan their funerals and pick out the clothes that they're wearing, their casket and gather and fundraise for money to bury them because their families weren't able to. So I appreciate the sentiments that were given and I hope we receive them.
Yes, I think there are probably several of us who could probably go through with our own stories. And I think that is, it's hard. And you're right, the scenes don't get etched out of your mind. I think of some of my own stories. And I think we could probably go through each person on the dais and their stories. But I think the fact of the matter is, yes, those are hard. And I'm sorry for each person who has to endure that. So next that we have, unless there's any more comments. Next, we have Tracy Fletcher on Regina Drive. Trace, Ms. Fletcher? Thank you.
Good evening, President Cordawag, Dr. King Cannon and esteemed Board members. My name is Tracy Fletcher. I'm the nurse at Waco High School. It's my fifth year at Waco High and the 22nd year of my nursing career. I take my job very seriously and I absolutely love my Lyon family fiercely. I consider it a privilege to serve at 2020 North 42nd Street. When I encounter people in the community, they ask me where I work sometimes. And when I tell them that I work at Waco High, they sigh loudly and they say they feel sorry for me. More on that in a moment. What I really want to make the focus here is I really invest a lot in Waco High and our school is in trouble. We're in real trouble. And it hurts my heart to watch it deteriorate day by day. Just this morning, we had a big fight in our foyer. It turned into an all-out brawl and Police Chief Williams had to come over and pull six officers from other campuses to help us restore order. Unfortunately, these type of occurrences are more the normal than they are the exception. In the addition to the fights, there's rampant vaping. There's illegal substance smoking, skipping classes, chronic absenteeism, gang activity and profound disrespect. Something has to change. The overall environment at Waco High, it's not safe anymore. And we are providing a great disservice to the kids who actually come there and want to learn and want to engage. I'm not here to point any fingers at any one person or group. It is just difficult to endure these things day by day. Morale is dangerously low at Waco High and job satisfaction is growing by the day. Inevitably, in any campus, there's going to be problems and issues that come up. But Waco High is your largest campus and it's your most populous campus. It is also your most problematic. From the perspective of a school nurse, I can tell you that the injuries that I am seeing this year are far more violent and frequent in nature. I'm having difficulty keeping up with the demand for ice packs. I'm having to order first aid supplies at rapid paces. I could go on and on, but my time is running out. In conclusion, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for you today about those people who say they feel sorry for me. I have one response for them. I say, "Don't." I am a helper and a healer by nature and by trade. And God has placed me where help and healing is needed the most. Thank you and lion pride runs deep.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher, for your comments, but also for your service to Waco High. We appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Patricia Chisholm Miller. Commissioner Miller? Oh, sorry, sorry. I didn't see you. There was a big pillar right here.
Good evening. You all can say good evening back. I want to thank you for allowing me these few moments to come before you. There's a quote, "The smallest of deeds is greater than the greatest intentions." And I say that because our children don't need speeches. Our children don't need our heartfelt sympathy. Our children need your action. Our children need your action. And I'm here today to speak to Agenda Item 11A and 11B. This is my second time coming before the Board. I was watching one of the meetings previously that you all had. I can't remember which trustee said it, but someone said that when trustee Davis and trustee Guillory brought up about the glass walls and the safety, we only hear you all talking about it. We don't hear the community talking about that. And I thought, well, I guess I got to go back because maybe I wasn't memorable. So, but I do know the community has come before you before. I know I've had conversations with trustee Ochoa, trustee Guillory, my trustee, Stephanie Cordawag and trustee Davis. So I know I have reached out to members of the Board about this. But I shouldn't have to keep coming under a system of representative government. I should not have to keep coming when I have people who are supposed to speak for me. But here we are today. And real quick, Mother Teresa says, "We fear the future because we are wasting today." We keep, it sounds like we're doing Groundhog Day. Although there is something new. On my birthday, November 10th, TA proposed a new rule that would establish a number of new safety requirements for our campuses. The proposed rule would establish a number of new safety requirements. Under the rule, schools would be required to install panic alarms, two-way emergency radios, automatic locks on all exterior doors and bulletproof glass in all ground floor windows. And it is on that note, when I read that, that I said, okay, I can see why this is back on the agenda. Because my understanding is that is not what you all are proposing, the bulletproof doors. If, if I'm wrong, then I await the conversation and to hear it. But what I can say, and as I go on further, they're even going to provide grants to school districts with a minimum of $200,000. And the application process, I guess, will come after the proposed rule goes into compliance. I'm here today to urge you all as Board members to understand why you were put up there. And that is to make sure that you have our children in your best interests. Stop that, I've got six seconds. And so I urge you all to safeguard our taxpayer dollars and do the design according to your TA rules.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Yeah, I appreciate the pointing out of the proposed legislation that has come forth. For this legislative session, there's about 7,000 legislative bills that are coming forth. This one, I think, seems to be a bit cost prohibitive because the state would have to basically back up if they require all schools to retrofit all exterior glass windows. Basically, the state would have to pay for that. And I think they had something in the ballpark of $240-something million. So Commissioner Miller's right, kind of set aside, but this money probably wouldn't cover all the retrofitting throughout the state of Texas.
Is that a question to Commissioner Miller?
That was just a comment. Yeah, but, but I appreciate it. That is, yes, she's very astute in keeping up with legislation. So next, we have Arneisha Linville.
Good evening. My name is Arneisha Linville. I'm also a teacher at Waco High and I'm also an alumni of Waco High. I'm coming too as well to discuss the safety concerns that we have witnessed at Waco High. So fighting has become the new norm. Now, it's typical for a fight to happen during passing periods or in the cafeteria where there's a crowd. Now they're happening during class periods. We have numerous of students who are not in class and are not being monitored because we are so short-staffed. Fights are leading to brawls and there is a fear one day that it's going to lead to something else due to the majority of the fights being gang-related where innocent bystanders could easily become hurt. There are also instances where students that are involved in these incidents are not even students enrolled on campus, which leads to another concern. How are non-students easily getting onto our campus? We need more bodies in visibility in the hallways during the class period while teachers are in classes teaching. We need more security and behavior aid support that are assertive in non-passive individuals with compensation of pay. We constantly have a revolving door of behavior staff leaving because they are not being compensated for the work that is needed to rectify this situation. There are way too many instances that serious offenses occur and students are back on campus a few days doing it all over again. There seems to be no accountability. Until this is under control, there's a need for more accountability at DAP level so our administration has the ability to not only enforce, but hold students accountable. Vaping is at an all-time high and our hallways consistently smell like drugs. The last couple of years, IDs, hoodies and dress code was a concern in an initiative that was put in place in a standard in which previous administrations were held accountable for. This year, it seems to be nonexistent. This year, the campus looks and feels like an unsafe school that is slowly being taken over by students who are in the hallways more than they are in class. I have been on this campus for 10 years and I haven't seen anything of this magnitude. We still have a good 90% of students that come to school to learn and represent the pride of Waco. It just seems like those, as the months go by, that the 10% that is not in the classroom is slowly overshadowing it all. Respectfully a concerned teacher.
Thank you so much, Ms. Linville.
President, I had a question. In your opinion, first of all, I want to thank you for coming out and sharing that. In your opinion, have you seen things progress in a positive way? Or do you think the problems are adding on top of each other at Waco High?
I'm seeing that we're starting to kind of get some more staff, but it's still a lot of, a lot of kids in the hallway still. I think the accountability piece that needs to happen, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Pam Cooper?
Good evening, Dr. King Cannon, President Cordawag and Board. And yes, I am here again. Y'all all know my name now. I'm here to plead with you on behalf of our teachers and our students to reconsider some of the design faults that we see in the new schools. I have teachers calling me, begging me, "Can we do anything?" We weren't told. We weren't asked, "Is this how we would like the schools to be?" We have teachers leaving for that reason. Last year, I asked a question, "How many teachers left by Christmas?" Think about that again. Because I know another two that quit last week and I've had three calls this week, teachers wanting to leave. Main issue, discipline. But they are very worried about the walls in the high school, the classrooms and that harbor and tenet. Think about this. You're surrounded tonight by walls and officers where you are safe. Now imagine, what if we were enclosed in glass and everybody was seeing what was going on? Would you feel it safe to speak out and do what you want to do? Teachers are begging for help. We're begging to help fix these schools because they need to be fixed. I'm a product of all the Waco schools. I'm proud to say I went to Crestview, Lake Ridgefield, now Waco High. Those were good schools and they can still be good schools. There is a lot of discipline problems. And I know you want to hear stories, but at one school I was working at, it was in Waco, I opened my classroom door and a man was running by with a gun. What did I do? Of course, I could slam my door and push the warning button. I felt safe because my children were safe. They were enclosed within walls. How would you feel if you weren't enclosed by walls and someone was in? You say they can't get in? Yes, they can. And I know there's things set up all across the district for safety to not get people in. I have a family member that works for DoorDash and he's told me he's walked into three schools this week, just walked in the doors. Someone else opens the door and he walks in, not showing anything, delivering food for DoorDash. That could have been anybody. So we still need to look at the safety on the outside as well as the safety on the inside. I haven't spoken to not one teacher that says they approve of having the glass walls. Not one. We already have a shortage of teachers here in Waco. Do we need more of a shortage? Do they beg to go to a school that doesn't have that? Or they leave the district to find a school that doesn't have it? Yes, plans are in order, but plans can be changed. And it's up to you to help make that decision of the people and the teachers that are crying out to you. Save us, save our children, do what's right morally. So I plead again, on behalf of the teachers, fix this design fault and help get our students back safe. Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas and blessed holidays.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Hope Must've Come. Okay, next, we have Hope Mustakam.
Good evening. I'd like to point out, first of all, that just typically, whenever you do group work with people in groups, and there's a change to the, the norm, you usually tell people what the change is so they know what to expect. That builds, there's like a mutual respect and trust there, so none, I don't think that we were aware that there would be response. So, it's more intimidating to parents and community members when they come up to speak their heart and their mind, and they know as they walk away that there will be comments to minimize what they say and sometimes support what they say. But that was just kind of jolting for me, I'm going to say, as a community member, that as we walk away, it, it feels like our comments now are going to be more easily dismissed or minimized or patronized. But that aside, I, of course, we're here once again to talk about discipline and behavior. And I would say that discipline is something that wasn't such a problem a few years ago. Things were getting better. And we were told in the past, I want to say maybe six months ago, that we were doing away with all the Dr. Nelson did, and that, you know, a new cohesive system was being put into place. We haven't seen that. I've never, ever heard this much coming out of our schools about violence and about kids being injured and ice packs. And I, I don't know how long you guys have been engaged, I know some of you with the community, but I've been embedded in our at-risk youth for 13 years, and I've never heard it this bad. So, I'm excited to hear what's going to change, and primarily, if we're, if, not if, that we're going to be doing restorative discipline, because discipline, it does not need to be penal, it does not need to be just preparation to institutionalize them and send them from the school-to-prison pipeline, which we talk about often, because this is, this is what it is, right? So, you, some board members have asked before, what, what is it? It's not, it's, it's getting better, right? It doesn't exist anymore. Well, this is it, right? We, we don't, we took 30-plus behavior staff off of campuses two years ago. We're having kids handcuffed and walk off, walked off of campus every day now? And guess where they're going? They're going to TD, TDJ eventually, because whenever we send them to Wiley, and they come back, and there's not a change on campus in behavior, behavior staffing, behavior support, mental health, they're going to go back, and eventually, they're going to end up in the criminal justice system. So, that's the school-to-prison pipeline in a nutshell, and it's still alive and well in Waco ISD. And so, would love to hear how we're going to invest, spend some of that money that we were told wasn't going to spend on a new chief of staff, spend maybe that on behavior staff, and be more transparent with the community about money. Maybe all of our board members keep us abreast, maybe our board members should know what's going on so that we don't have to come up here and tell them. We, it's just, it's, it's really disappointing to see the direction that the school district is going, and that it doesn't seem to be getting better, but only worse day by day. So, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mustakam. I do want to apologize to anyone else for unknowingly commenting and not making you aware of that. There is, because we do have agenda items that have been posted, and the audience for guests is allowed to speak to that specific agenda item, the board members on the dais have the ability to ask questions or kind of clarifying questions or comments, everyone on the dais. And it was actually Mr. Davis and Mr. Gilery who'd kind of brought that to the attention because we had an old script that said that they couldn't. And so, I do apologize if that did feel jarring or jolting to anyone, but that is, going forward, that is kind of how we will continue to progress, so. Thank you.
Just want to point a clarification.
Yes.
Trustee Grant asked at our last board meeting, could he ask a question after public comment? And then we, the board was advised by the board lawyer that we could make public comments. So, the board was just informed that we could make comment back at our last board meeting.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, great. Oh, it wasn't Trustee Gilery. Sorry, let me clarify that. Yes. Okay, here we go. And item number seven, superintendent report.
All right, well, good evening and Merry Christmas. I'm going to be brief this evening, and just want to celebrate our kids and this holiday season, and how special it has been with our student performances, and you all got a taste of that this evening. In fact, since Thanksgiving, in the three weeks following Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, we've had more than 50 events showcasing the talents of our students and the skills of our fine arts teachers. So, rather than just tell you about that and show you pictures like I normally would do this evening, I want to share a short video highlighting those performances. And so, with that, we'll show the video. Feliz año nuevo, feliz año nuevo, ros pero año a ti. All right. Thank you to all of our fine arts teachers, our kids, and to our communications department for putting that together.
Okay, wonderful. We have item number eight, information items and reports. We have Cheryl, monthly and quarterly financial.
It's just for a report.
Oh, just for a report, yes, thank you. Okay, consent agenda, sorry if you have any questions. Does the board have any questions on item 8A and 8B? Nope, okay, hearing none. We'll move on to consent agenda. I have been asked to pull 9G and 9H. Are there any other consent agenda items that need to be pulled? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve consent agenda, the consent agenda without items 9G and 9H. Do you have a motion?
I move that we accept agendas presented with the exception of 9G and 9H.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, 9G, allowance expenditure authorization to address the cost of remediation of the building pad to Waco High, I believe Gloria, sorry, can't see, Ms. Parera, thank you. Mr. Gilery, did you want to lead out on that? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to see some, did y'all have some sort of presentation that went with this particular item, because I really didn't understand. You were talking about the water damage or something along the lines as far as the base is concerned of the school. I wanted to see, was there any type of cost and what cost that was going to come, come with this particular item?
Okay, certainly. So, good evening, Madam President, members of the board of trustees, Dr. Kinkanen. This item, allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, number two, is to address the cost of basically repairing the building pad at Waco High School. With me is John Egling with Rogers O'Brien, and also Jared Sturzinger with O'Connell Robertson. And this is necessary because the building pad, though it had been built according to specification, and that we had quality assurance testing all the way through the project that, that showed that it had been compacted properly, that it had the proper moisture content, all that, all those details, it was all checked. We have the reports from our testing company showing it, but then something happened, and that's, I think, about 10 inches of rain in the first or the last two and a half weeks, three weeks. So, I want to ask John if he would just come explain it to you from the perspective of Rogers O'Brien.
Good evening. There is a package that I believe y'all had in the agenda with some pictures and some things showing what the pads look like. If not, I do have a copy on myself here. But Darren, and also have the NOAA weather report printout from the municipal airport about seven miles down the road from our job site for the month.
Can I see what you're talking about? I don't, I don't have it. Can I see that?
You have a couple copies of the pictures? I had the pictures.
Could you hand us the, so we can pass it down, the pictures and the?
Yep.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Here's the NOAA printout, too, of the weather station report over the last, really, the rain events really hit us between October 28th to November 28th. We had over seven inches of rain, just seven miles down the road that was reported. Actually, on-site, we reported another inch and a half than that on-site. So, we had over eight inches of rain on-site within a month timeframe. During that time, we were building the building pads. When you're processing earthwork like that, on a project of this size, many of y'all have drove, driven by that site, you can see how high the pads are, the amount of earthwork and dirt and fill that goes in that pad. When you get significant rainfall like that in a short amount of time, it can cause issues with the building pad material. It did happen in this instance. We went to start drilling piers that first week of December per our schedule, and due to the amount of rain we got, there was excessive rutting and pumping of the pad. We notified our third-party testing agent right away about it. They came out and did some additional density shots and some, some test wells to see, and there was excessive moisture that had gotten in the pad over that last month. So, they provided remediation to us to fix the pad. And again, the size of this project, the size of the pad, it gets costly to fix a pad of that size in, in that state. So, the allowance expenditure form is to remediate the pad and fix the current condition of it and put a 12-inch base cap on it so that it doesn't continue to fell in the future. We are in a rainy season right now. We went all summer without getting rain, now we're getting rain, and we're going to continue to probably get rain into, into the spring. So, the 12-inch base cap also caps off that pad and keeps it from falling again in the future.
Yeah. So, how normal is something like this? Is this something that was just, that was just unforeseen yet seen before?
Something that's unforeseen, it doesn't, it doesn't happen all the time. This is probably one of the only times it's happened to me. So, it does not happen all the time.
Mr. Cordaway?
Yes, Mr.?
Can you talk a little bit about the, the compaction process and what you have to go through and the regulations you have to meet to prepare the soil before you pour the concrete?
Yes, so, it's six-inch lifts. This portion of the pad is almost 13 and a half foot tall, and so, we had a third-party testing agency out there with us inspecting, processing the material, testing it in six-inch lifts all the way to the top to the select fill.
So, that means every six inch, you pour six inches and compact it, they come and test it, you pour another six inches, they come back and test it. So, all throughout the process, that'd be, that would be 26 times, I guess, or 13 feet. It's been tested throughout and met, met their specifications?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's been a couple of times that a density test fell, but it got remedied. It's mainly because of the rain events that may have happened during the time, there's too much moisture, right? So, we would have to recondition it, rework the, that section of that lift, and then it would pass the next day. So, no, no open deficiencies. There's a few that had failed over the last few months in different areas, but those had been repaired and fixed and passed. Every time it was, it was because of the rain event, too much moisture in that material. We had to rework it, dry it out, and retest it.
President Cordaway, I have a question. You said that you guys didn't foresee, you didn't foresee rain happening, or is it the amount of rain? And also, moving forward, how can we stop this from happening again? And do we have a plan in place? I get the regulations, I get checking it every six inches, but we still kind of had this situation. So, moving forward, how can we come back there?
So, moving forward, we're going to put a, a six-inch base cap on the remaining building pad sections to get a good all-weather service to get us through this rainy season so it doesn't, it doesn't happen again.
Is it, was it a reason that that wasn't done from the beginning?
It's not required. It's a additional cost to do that, and it's not required.
Yeah. Messiah Zetti?
But this change will not increase that guaranteed maximum price, and it will also not change the project completion date?
That's correct. That's correct. It's coming out of the construction contingency. Yes, ma'am.
The construction contingency, that's the allotted funds that we have, is there any changes or things that we need to maneuver during the process of building the school?
That's correct. Unforeseen conditions, items like this.
Are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion for 9G allowance expenditure authorization to address cost of the remediation of the building pad to Waco High School.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Thank you, Mr. Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We have, Ms. Parera, you're scooting over to address 9H, approval of the construction manager at risk delivery method for the new Kendrick Elementary and renovation in additions to South Waco Elementary School. Questions?
I did have a question on that. Is there any other options on the table as far as the, just explaining the process there, is there any other options?
I'm sorry, any other option?
Any other methods?
Other than the construction manager at risk?
Yes, yes, of course. So, back in March, I believe it was March or April, I don't know, earlier this year, the board approved the competitive seal proposal delivery method as a default method. So, that is, everything we're going to do is going to be competitive seal proposal unless we come to you and ask for it to be different, okay? And that's basically just to save time for everybody and make it clear. Well, as, as O'Connell Robertson and, and as we all discussed, these two projects, Kendrick and South Waco, we, we really started to think that it would be more beneficial for the district to have a construction manager at risk on board that could provide extensive pricing during the design, also planning, the use of the facility. These are on occupied sites. You know, we've got a lot of, a lot of challenges with both of them as far as, you know, they're both tough because we have existing schools on both sites. So, we really thought it would be better in, in Waco's best interest to have the construction manager at risk on board for those projects. So, yeah, there are other options, but that's, that's the one we believe is the best one and the most beneficial for Waco ISD.
Yes, Messiah Zetti?
And the selection committee that will choose that CMAR, can you talk about that committee?
Yes, so, we've discussed that internally, and the selection committee includes Dr. Dale McCall, who is the principal of Guama, Jared Sturzinger, Sherry Smith, okay, Sherry? Kevin Hafer, and myself. And the financials will be evaluated, of course, by, by Waco ISD, our CFO, for the financials for the firms.
President?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Is it, is it a reason why there isn't a member of the board that is a part of this committee? Or what would be, if, if so, what is the reason that is no members of the board are a part of this committee?
I, I think I can maybe speak to that. That is, that kind of goes back to our opening, kind of, board's role is to set goals, listen to reports of superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We're not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. So, really, the board role in this is the oversight, not kind of the day-to-day decisions that go into it.
I appreciate it. The construction manager at risk, would they be under contract?
Yes.
So, then, it would be something that the board has privy to?
Oh, yes.
So, I was just wondering, again, why would a board member, why is no board member a part of this committee? I'm just wondering a reason as to why the board is a part of this committee.
Well, again, if I would, Mr. Davis, we will be a part when it's been brought to us. The construction manager at risk will be presented by Ms. The construction manager at risk will be presented by Mrs. Barrera to us for approval. So that's where we come in. So I think to sit in those meetings is kind of in the management spectrum.
Is that like per, per board policy or is that just our personal thoughts or?
That's great. Mr. Rusik, do you mind coming and answering a question, please? I don't have the specific statute, but if you could help us understand this, please.
Chapter 2269, excuse me, the local government code.
That's what I need. Let me write this down.
2269, I said local, of the Texas government code is the chapter that requires school districts and other governmental entities to choose one of the approved construction methods. Construction manager at risk is one of those. Throughout that chapter, the reference is made to the governmental entity, right? That phrase is used throughout the chapter. That phrase is never defined in the chapter, right? So if you start trying to look at, at what point does something have to be done or is required to be done by the governmental entity, it'll say the governmental entity, but as a very practical matter, what I can tell you is almost, I'm not aware of any situation, whether it's a school district or others, where when you're going through, whether it's a competitive sealed proposal or whether it's the construction manager at risk and you're going through the process of writing the RFP, right? Deciding the selection criteria, doing all those things that a city council member or a school board trustee or county commissioners, that they serve in those roles. The roles that the governing body serves is when the, whoever's serving on that committee has developed the evaluation criteria, they've gotten the responses and they've gone in and they've ranked them and scored them, they then bring it to you, bring the contracts to you for you to decide on. That's the governmental entity's role. That's what I've seen everybody do and, and you know.
I appreciate it. So would it be breaking board policy, it's just not the norm that you witnessed, right?
The WISD board policy, keeping in mind when you say policy, Mr. Davis, the legal policy's not y'all's policies. It's just a summary, typically a summary of the statute in this case. The local policy, to my recollection, doesn't address what we're talking about, right? It doesn't, it doesn't say who's going to be on any particular committee, who's going to decide, who's going to be on the committee. It doesn't, it doesn't spell those out.
Mr. Gilery?
You said, you said oversight and you said contract and come back with contracts and a selection process and committee. That's the issue I had. The last time we done this, the committee signed the contract, brought the contract to us and pitted the board against the business community. That's what I don't want to happen again. So I would like to make sure we're not getting ourselves into something like that to where as a contract is brought to us and already done. That's the question. That's why I pulled this item. I want to make sure that before a contract is signed, the board gets an opportunity to have the oversight to make sure we're not pitted against our community again.
Well, I'd, I'd have to take issue though, Mr. Gilery. The contract was not signed. It was up to the board to whether the board was going to approve that contract or not. The board's option, you'll recall, I was asked that question, the agenda item that you had, the board could have voted not to approve that contract.
With consequences.
I'm sorry?
With consequences. It's, it's the way it was explained.
Well.
Because it was already a.
Hold on, Mr. Gilery, let's let him finish real quick and then we can, we can continue. Sorry. Yes?
Keeping in mind though, the, the board, once you've chosen, once the board has decided on a construction delivery method, whether it's CM, CMAR or whether it's competitive sealed proposal, whether it's hard bid, whatever method the board chooses, once the board chooses that, the district's got to follow that method. And under the competitive sealed proposal method, the district is obligated to negotiate with the number one ranked proposer. And that's my understanding of that's what happened. The, the, the board didn't have to approve the contract. Would there have been delays if the board had not approved that contract? Probably so to some degree, but, but the, the board didn't have to approve the contract.
I'm gonna go back to oversight. I want to make sure we get into a position to where the board has oversight, to where we're not in the same position we were in last time. My recommendation is to pull this, get the information, pick a process to where we have oversight and, and not get ourselves in the same situation we were in the last meeting.
There's no guarantee that you won't get in the same situation. Anyone can be unhappy with not winning a bid.
Okay, so this is one thing, one second. Mr. Gilery, I understand your concern. I think everyone on the board wanted our local contractors to get the thing. Mr. Rusik, thank you for answering the question. I agree.
It's a process.
I, I agree. Hold on, one second, one second. Yeah, no, I, I, I'm not going back and forth with you. I am, I'm gonna explain a little bit. I'm not going back and forth with you. I'm just explaining, I'm not explaining it to you. I'm just saying, we've done the, how we got into this was when we did the sealed bid process, when the, all of our other contracts have been contract manager at risk. So this, the, the risk kind of mitigates some of, the contract manager at risk mitigates us really kind of getting in there, but, or getting into that situation again. It's not a guarantee, but it does help mitigate some of it. But I understand what you're talking about. I think there is, I mean, I think everyone on the board felt that way in terms of our local contractor.
That's my recommendation.
Can I say, Madam President?
Yes, yes.
I think, Ms. Barrera, it would do me good as a trustee to hear that this process will work better as far as, I'm hearing the best for Waco and this would be better for Waco. Will this process put the board, because per our board lawyer, we were in a bind last time. If we didn't approve that contract, we could have been at risk of being sued. So I just wanted to make sure that this method would give us more oversight and more of a say-so and we wouldn't be bound to just whatever recommendation comes out of the committee. So it would do me good to hear from you if that is what we're saying is better for Waco.
Well, the reason I'm saying the construction manager and the reason that, that we believe, all of us, the architect and, and Waco ISD operations, we, we believe it's best because we have the contractor at the table during the design process. As far as the selection process go, that almost sounds like a Mr. Rusik question to me, because I can't guarantee anything. We're going to go through the process the way the statute requires us to and, and hopefully people will respond the way they intend to and we'll have a good outcome. I mean, that's, that's all we can do.
Mr. Cordwick, may I say something?
Mr. Grant, yes.
I was, I just had one more thing. I was gonna say, thank you for the answer.
Hold on just one second. Let Mr. Grant ask and then we'll, we'll let you come back.
I just want to be clear about the process last time. The process we followed was a legal process. I had a conversation with K. Paul Holt after this meeting in this room. I've had text messages with him since then. I had a phone conversation with him today. His exact words were that the decision that was made last week was because of a mistake of a local contractor. That needs to be communicated. The decision that was made last week was a result of a mistake of a local contractor. That's a terrible mistake. I've made some mistakes. I've made some bad mistakes. And I would encourage you to ask Mr. Holt, who represents all of those contractors, about the last week's meeting. Everybody in this, on this dais, I am guessing, would have voted for a local contractor had they followed the right procedures and come up with a plan that met our expectations. They didn't. And so we could not do what in my gut we wanted to do. And that's a challenge. But there are consequences to mistakes and that's what happened last time.
Okay, Mr. Davis, yes, please.
I appreciate the overview. I appreciate the passion. I don't think we're asking, I speak for my, I don't think I'm asking about local contractors. I'm asking more about the board's ability to make a different decision than what the committee has recommended. At the last time, in the closed sealed proposal, I won't go through it again because we've, we've heard that process a couple of times now. But during the closed sealed proposal, whichever company got the highest bid, we had to negotiate that contract. So in this process, will you guys be bringing us multiple contractors and we get to pick? Will you give us a more recommendation? Will we have to go with that recommendation or face legal repercussions? That's more of the question than the answers that I'm looking for right now. Not about local contractors, because we know you can't point out your favorite person and give them the job. That's not what we're saying at all. We're talking about the process. And we were just wondering if the committee decides and picks, picks a number one person for that contract, will the board legally have to award or negotiate that contract with that contractor or will we have more options this time?
You would not have to. You would not legally have to. I mean, we will bring to you a recommendation and then the board will decide whether or not you want to approve it.
Messiah Zetti?
Yes.
My question about the selection committee was to point out that you did listen to concerns of the board after the last process, that I do think that the committee the last time around did everything appropriately, as trustee Grant said, but that you are trying to expand the transparency and to make sure that it is, as few questions as possible by adding another committee member this go-around.
Yes.
I do have one question about the packaging of the two. The two schools and the timing and the necessity. Is it necessary to make the decision for both schools now because they're going to happen at the exact same time? Or are they going to be stacked? Is it possible, if they're not happening at the same time, to delay that decision on the, the later project until a later time? Because it becomes a bigger project if it's all packaged now and that may impede somebody's ability to bid it if it's an incredibly large project versus a smaller project that somebody more local could address. That, that'd be my fear is that, that if we can delay the packaging of those two things into two separate places, that it would allow possibly a smaller group to come in and bid each one separately, where maybe they could handle one, but they couldn't handle both. Or maybe they could handle both, but not at the same time. Does that make sense?
Yes, it's a great question.
And so what's the necessity of packaging them both together now? Is it because the timing is at the same time?
So I don't, I don't want to mislead anybody. We're not necessarily packaging them together now. We're just asking for the delivery method for each of them to be construction manager at risk. We want to allow the proposers that, that decide to come after this job to tell us, we want to do both of them or we only want to do South Waco or we only want to do Kendrick, so that we can find broader participation possibly if we have interested parties that only want to do one of the projects, so they won't have to do all of them at one time.
So the requirement, well, I just want to make sure the requirement will not be that if you're going to bid this, you're going to bid both schools at one time?
Correct.
Okay.
That's an option, but it's not required.
And, and, and a contractor will not be bumped points or taken away advantage if they're not, if they're, if they can only bid one project? Is that correct?
Correct.
And you won't receive extra points if you can do both projects? Is that correct?
At this time, we hadn't finished all the finalization of the criteria, but I don't, we can, I don't anticipate doing that.
I would encourage you not to do that. I would try to set the playing field as equally as we can to folks within our community that are small organizations that could do both or maybe choose not to do, do both.
Understood.
Yes, Mr. Rusik? No?
But may I ask Ms. Barrera a question?
Yes, please.
Relative to your question, Mr. Grant, district's recommendation, the administration's recommendation to the board is the two-step process under chapter 2269. And in that process, the initial analysis is based on the selection criteria that are published and there is no pricing component that can be considered at all.
Right.
In the first step of the process. Once you've gone through that, the administration then can identify five or fewer offerers, proposers, whatever term you want to use, and having done that, ask them to submit pricing information, but it's not for the project overall. That's where it's very different from competitive sealed proposal.
Right.
Because it's the whole project. It's for their general fees and expenses, right? And, and it's not for the project as a whole. And then what, and, and those need to be opened publicly and announced, everybody knows what they are. And then once that happens, the, whoever it is that presents the best value to the district, right? Whichever offerer appears to present the best value to the district, considering qualifications, general fees, the, those things, that's who the statute says the district's got to try to negotiate a contract with them.
Okay.
That's, that's the process.
Yeah, so that first phase, there's not, there are markers, they're just not financial markers in that first phase, correct? In the second phase, the financial component becomes a part of it. I just want to make sure in that first phase that we do everything we can to equal the playing field between smaller contractors, whether they're local or not, and larger corporations so that, so that we can hear the voice of the folks that came and spoke.
Absolutely.
Mr. Cordwick?
Yes, Mr. Ochoa?
The criteria to determine the best value, are you still, you said you were still coming up with those?
Well, we're refining them. I mean, it, you know, I mean, it's going to be, there's going to be a cost component, of course, and then the experience and the, the pre-construction services that the firms offer, how they would propose working on these two projects, you know, how, how they would work on them, you know, what do they see as challenges for South Waco? What do they see as challenges for Kendrick? So we'll, we'd be looking at some specific things for how, you know, we want to see what their brain power is on the best ways to approach the projects, the most cost-efficient and, you know, safest for the, safest for the kids, safest for the, the community, et cetera.
When you're, when you're through refining that, can you make that available to us? Just for information purposes?
I don't know the answer to that, Peter. They want, they want a, the criteria, you want the criteria?
Just the rubric?
Prior to the bid going out, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's public information, it's public information.
Yeah.
What you meant after the, the bids came in.
No, no, no.
So you just want the criteria. That's fine.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Ms. Barrera, I do want to say thank you for all of your hard work. I know this is not an easy lift and it is, what I've heard from different contractors is that you're very professional. You have done a really great job in terms, and you're really good at what you do. So thank you for all of your time. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to, on 9H approval of the construction manager at risk delivery method for the new Kendrick Elementary and renovation in additions to South Waco Elementary School. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vedania. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. We will, if there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Barrera. Thank you. We will move on to item 10, review and discuss opportunity culture program. Dr. Gutierrez?
Good eve, excuse me. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees and Dr. King Cannon. It's my pleasure tonight to work with a wonderful team of folks that I will introduce here in a few minutes to give you an update about opportunity culture. And opportunity culture is some of the most exciting work, I think, that's happening here in Waco ISD. We're at the vanguard of this work here in Texas and even nationally, because I believe there's probably only about a dozen school districts in the state of Texas doing this work. And it's definitely picking up some momentum. But the importance of this work is really around some of the, the biggest challenges we face here in education right now. Opportunity culture helps us attract and retain teachers and we're seeing the positive effects of that in the five schools where we're implementing. It's also about reaching excellence in our schools. We talk about having honor roll schools, about having a, a system of great schools and not just a good school here and there. This is an effort or a strategy to do that. And last but not least, it's, it's about building a pipeline of teachers who are, who, growing our own pipeline and growing our own teachers and hiring from within and training those teachers and also building their leadership capacity. teachers and also building their leadership capacity. So you're going to hear a little bit about that and I want to introduce the group. We have our Director of Opportunity Culture, Melissa Cox, and she'll be taking the lead, but she has some help from one of our amazing principals at Parkdale, Mrs. Lena Ortiz. And then we have one of our multi-classroom leaders and her name is Mrs. Christina Munoz and she is from Kendrick. And so I'm going to turn it over to them.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm very excited to share about opportunity culture. I'm Melissa Cox and I joined our Waco family in June. And I just first and foremost want to thank the board and Dr. Kinkanen for being the vanguard in establishing a vision of implementing opportunity culture. Waco ISD is a trailblazer in implementing a career pathway that increases leadership opportunities and that yields higher student outcomes. So what is opportunity culture? Opportunity culture, we refer to OC, is a team of teachers and school leaders that have specific roles. The primary, the foundational piece of this is to reach more students with excellent teaching. And so essentially what this means is that we are increasing equity of great instruction from classroom to classroom across the entire campus. Teachers in other roles in OC receive substantially more pay and this pay is all funded within the regular school budget. So the great benefit of being funded throughout the regular school budget is that the staff and campus can rely on those extra stipends and funding year after year. It's not like a grant where after you implement a program and then after three years, you're looking to how you're going to continue funding. It's all funded within the regular budget. So that's a benefit. However, when campuses are moving towards opportunity culture, the budget can be the most difficult process in moving because campus administrators have to look at their current allocations and how they may repurpose those to fund the stipends and extra pay. During the school day, time is protected so that our teachers and leaders have time for observation, coaching, feedback, data analysis, and leadership opportunities. To match these leadership responsibilities, each person has specific role and role clarity and these responsibilities are then matched with accountability throughout our model. So let's take a look at two different models. You'll see on one side is like a traditional school model and then maybe an example of what opportunity culture could look like on a campus. So when you look at the first model, you may see like a campus principal, an assistant principal, perhaps an instructional specialist, and these three are responsible for growing the entire campus, all the teacher leaders. When you look at opportunity culture, what stands out to you? Well, opportunity culture is built on distributed leadership. And what that is, is the leadership is shared amongst multiple leaders on the campus. So on this campus, you would see a campus principal, an assistant principal, and then multiple teacher leaders. These teachers still have a classroom that they teach, but they also have the great opportunity to lead small teams. So with leading these small teams, the teachers have more touchpoints and have more opportunities to be provided feedback and coaching. These teachers are currently teaching the curriculum and so they're able to share during planning, hey, I'm teaching this and this is what is really working in the classroom, but I tried this and it didn't really work. So they're able to really support and build teacher capacity. Another great thing about opportunity culture is sustainability. So if you think about both of these models and leaders, what's important is if one of the leaders is removed from the campus, what happens to the systems? So with opportunity culture, we have more leaders that have more buy-in in the systems and it makes sustainability where that campus is moving forward towards accomplishing their vision. So next, Principal Ortiz at Parkdale Elementary is going to share.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to Ms. Cox for allowing me this opportunity and really going back to the first year with Dr. Gutierrez, who presented this program for the first time. And I'm not going to lie, as a first-year principal, I was kind of like, am I, you know, getting something that I may not know what I'm doing? But I just want to let you know that these three areas really impacted my culture because of OC. The relationships is what really we focused on when my first year at Parkdale. And I think this happens a lot of times is teachers are kind of feel isolated and they don't work with their team or they might have a PLC, a professional learning community time, that's maybe once a week. This really challenged me to come up with a master's schedule that allowed for a time for teachers to have a conference, 45-minute conference with their grade level. And my teachers also have a 45-minute professional learning community time. We do this four days a week. And this is a time for them to meet with their vertical team, which is, for instance, a three-through-five math team would be third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade math teachers planning together, talking about instruction, effective practices. It is led by an MCL, which is a multi-classroom leader. Thank you to Mr. Gillery for coming to my campus today. He actually saw this in practice today. He visited a fifth-grade classroom where there was a multi-classroom leader, a Tarleton teacher resident, which is a student that, in practice. And we also had a REACH associate in there. And I really wanted to point out to him that at that point, the teacher resident was teaching the class. So she was, at this point in the year, she is actually leading the classroom. The multi-classroom leader is also in there to facilitate, help her, give her suggestions, coach afterwards. But really, when she leaves to go coach, model, team teach, you should never see a change in instruction because they have been with that MCL this entire time. And so, like I said, this kind of built the culture of our relationships got stronger because we had a team working together. And so, which ultimately led to student-teacher growth. When I came to Parkdale, we were a D campus and so I knew what was going to be at the top of my agenda as an instructional leader. We knew we were going to have growth last year because of COVID the year before, but I don't think we could have really anticipated the amount of growth that we had when we implemented OC. I'm proud to say that 84% of our students met their growth measures in reading and 83% of them met their growth measures in math. That's phenomenal. And we moved up to be a B campus. And so, I really do feel that this was, oh, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. We moved from a D to a B. So, and I don't really think it would have been possible had we not really implemented this model because it really had our teachers together, planning, you know, looking at best practices, looking at research-based strategies. And again, this led to really building the leaders on our campus. I had very successful teachers individually that had great scores. And so what this did, it opened the door for them to share their practice with their colleagues. And so that built our teacher capacity, you know, and it strengthened our relationships amongst the teams and really offered them an opportunity, also with that stipend that they received for the hard work that they were doing. And like Dr. Gutierrez alluded to, we are really building teachers here in Waco ISD that we want to keep. And I'm proud to say that I was able to keep one of my REACH associates, which is like a paraprofessional, but she became a teacher for us and she has done phenomenal. It's like she's been a teacher for a long time and this is her first year. And also, one of my teacher residents from Tarleton stayed with us and also became a teacher on our campus. So we are really growing our own in this model. Growing our own also too as leaders because they've been given an opportunity to really show their practice and their skills. So I'm really, really impressed with this program, so much so and that Dr. Kinkanen can tell you, when we have our meeting at the end of the year with the assistant principals, I only did this in three-through-five last year. And I really worked hard to look at my budget and I extended that to K2. So I have a K2 MCL for RLA and also have a K2 math MCL. And so I'm excited to see the growth in our Renaissance scores this year for those grade levels to see if it makes the same impact, which I think it will. Thank you.
I do want to take time to acknowledge Mrs. Ortiz and our other campus principals that are a part of opportunity culture for taking the leap of reallocating their budget and trying something innovative because it is, I mean, it's a joy on a daily basis to go on these campuses and see that we're building teacher capacity and the conversations that teachers are having with other teachers, it's profound. So let's dive in a little bit to what the roles are of opportunity culture. So when we looked back at that model, the leader of the small teams, like I said, are classroom teachers, they still have a classroom. Those are referred to as multi-classroom leaders or multi-classroom teachers. In OC, we abbreviate everything, like you know, in education. So we refer to them as MCLs. So they are the team leader. They are in charge of doing observation, feedback, planning, co-teaching, modeling, intervention, data analysis. And there's two levels of MCLs. There's an MCL1 that leads two to three teachers and an MCL2 leads four to six teachers. The stipends are $13,000 for MCL1 and $16,000 for MCL2. And these are partial release, MCLs. Another factor or role in opportunity culture is a master team REACH teacher. And this year is the first year that we've implemented this role. They are referred to as a MTRT and they do similar activities as an MCL, but they work underneath an MCL. So they have that support while they continue to build their expertise. And an MTRT works directly with one teacher to grow that teacher and extend the reach of the team and they receive a stipend of $5,000. Waco ISD is a pioneer in how we have utilized teacher residents. Teacher residents are a year-long paid residency, which is, we are one of the few districts in Texas that pay our teacher residents. And you're like, what's a teacher resident? They are like a student-teacher. Like a typical student-teacher, like back in the day, many years ago, when I was a student-teacher, it was like for semester and you may fluctuate between one to two teachers and get your credit, your last year of college. And with our model, our teacher residents start in service. They see how to implement classroom management all the way through the last day of school. And our teacher residents are paid at 80% of an instructional aid. And you're asking probably, why 80%? Well, since they are working full-time and going to school full-time, they work on our campuses four days a week and then attend classes one day a week because they're wrapping up their final year of college. And so, we're real excited about our teacher residents and like Mrs. Ortiz says, is that our goal is to be able to hire them as teachers on our campuses. Another critical role is our REACH associates and these are highly qualified instructional aides that provide support instructionally and non-instructionally. And they receive extra pay of $2,000 because they have a lot of responsibility. Like we said earlier, is we want to be able to walk into a classroom and not know whose role is who, is because we are building great teachers of all the roles. So another really important part of opportunity culture is developing a career pathway. So this starts with our current students, like our PTEC students and our students that are in our teaching and learning CTE pathway is, we're hoping that those students are going to be graduating soon with an associate. But all of our students that are in our teaching and learning pathway will graduate to be able to be a paraprofessional, to be certified, to be a paraprofessional on our campuses. And so it starts there and then also with our current instructional aides, is that they can apply to be a part of a REACH associate, which is a highly qualified instructional aide. And they're part of that MCL team where they're getting coaching and feedback and developing their expertise. And then, hopefully, they're also working towards getting a bachelor's degree and becoming a certified teacher, that they can then move into a teacher resident, their fourth year of school and still working on that team where they're building their expertise and putting extra tools in their teacher toolbox. And then hopefully, our goal is to be able to hire all of our teacher residents as a teacher on one of our OC campuses or within the district. And so the great benefit of that is that we've trained them, like our expectations of Waco ISD and what we're wanting from them, and they have a full year of experience before their first year as a teacher. And then, we hope after they graduate, that we hire them as a team teacher, that's a part of this model. And then, after they have worked on that team, again, developing their expertise, that they would have the opportunity to move into a master team REACH teacher, MTRT, where they work with one teacher and receive that $5,000 stipend and they continue to grow and hopefully become an MCL where they are transitioning to the leader of those teams because our MCLs are creating the other leaders on our campuses. And so it's just a really innovative way of a career pathway where we're building teacher capacity. And so, let's look at some possibilities. So these are some potential possibilities with salary that we hope to gain in the upcoming years. So all of these examples are built on a teacher salary that has 15 years' experience. So let's look at the first two examples. These are elementary teachers with 15 years' experience. The first one is also an MCL2 and that works with four to six teachers. And this teacher has a strong student growth and has been designated under TIA as master. So their potential salary is a six-figure salary, $100,500. And let's say that same teacher is also, an example two, a bilingual teacher. A bilingual teacher receives $5,000 and so you can see what that projected salary would look like. We're hoping to expand to a secondary campus because all of our current OC campuses are all elementary. So we're hoping to expand to a secondary because we want to also network those teacher residents in our secondary campuses. But let's look at this example. It's 15 years' experience, an MCL2. They're also TIA-designated. And this teacher perhaps is working in a high-needs area with, in math content and receive an $8,000 stipend. So that would be $108,500. We currently have teachers in OC that are making over $90,000. And so to me, that is profound because we are setting the precedence that our teachers do not have to leave the classroom, that they can make a wonderful salary teaching our students. And so, what has been our success? And so we shared a little bit about Parkdale and their tremendous growth. All of our campuses in OC increase one to two letter grades or maintain a B. To me, again, that is tremendous growth. I will highlight that a lot of our campuses are Bs. And I will just let you know is that it is very difficult, once you reach that B status, to maintain that growth. But we are very proud and this is results from one year of implementation. And so, you know, the first time you do things, you always learn and you can look at how we grow. And so this is year two with those campuses and they have expanded on their campuses, the reach to have the equity among classes. And so currently, we are at five campuses. We have 45 educators that are paid extra pay for OC, that's all funded within our regular budget, and we reach over 2,000 students. So next, we want you to hear from a perspective of one of our multi-classroom leaders. We have Mrs. Munoz from Kendrick Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. So glad to be here. Okay, first, I just have to say, I don't know if you can tell, I'm beaming with pride. Can you see it? Beaming right here because those sweet little babies that were on there singing "Feliz" know what? Those were my second-grade babies. I'm so proud of them. Also, I'm pointing at the screen because that's where I saw his name. Edgar Marquez was a former student, first-team tackle. I mean, I taught him all his moves, but I'm just, you know. But as far as OC, it's just been such a joy to be a part of. As a teacher with the district for 16 years, all at Kendrick Elementary, you start to, after, okay, I was trying to think about how to convey this to you guys. And so, I was thinking of an analogy, like when you're dating someone, you know, and you're in a relationship and you've been with them a while, you know how your family starts asking those like, so when you getting married? You know, and they start asking though, what's next? Well, the same thing happens in education with teachers. It's after so many years of teaching, they're like, all right, now what's next for you? What are you going to do? And for me, the thought like, God bless all of these principals and admin that do what they do, but I feel like that's a very specific calling for them and was never something I personally wanted to venture out into because I think it's, you know, it's their own special thing. And me, I love to be anchored in the classroom and having those interactions with kids every day. day. But after, you know, so many years working, you're kind of like on autopilot and like, as Ms. Ortiz said, you're, you're your own little island, but you still want to make an impact. And this has, opportunity culture has made it so that I can share what I know and I can grow other teachers with my experiences and then growing and learning with the district and then sharing out with them. And then, you're a part of, and actually, when they were talking about TIA and designations and things like, I'm not just responsible for my class, but everyone I coach, they're directly undermined. So, my scorecard reflects, so, I mean, it's intense. I mean, you're, you've got, you know, the weight of, it's not just what you do. And so, I go into classrooms weekly, the models that she projected up there, I was part of that first model where it was a principal and an instructional specialist. And I got coached as a teacher maybe twice the entire year, maybe. And I go into classrooms weekly with every teacher. I see them, I mean, we're talking brand-new teachers, zero-years' experience, don't look like it because we're in there, you know, just constantly honing those things and they can ask those questions. As far as content goes, you know, fifteen years teaching second grade, you, you know your content backwards and forwards, so they can ask you those questions, you know, just in conversations passing in the hall. But we still do all of the data analysis and everything, but it's just been, just so fulfilling to be able to feel like, you know, I'm not just reaching these here and, but it's also challenging, but I get to, you know, touch more people and just spread the love. Thank you.
And so, here's a couple of quotes from a couple of our MCLs. And so, what are our next steps? Our next steps is, we are identifying five potential campuses to implement opportunity culture in the next school year, starting next fall. And we actually have started a lot of those conversations in our first presentation of opportunity culture this month. And in the spring, we're going to be looking at redesigning our professional development to further support our opportunity camp, uh, culture campuses and also redesigning the process for hiring of what that pool looks like because they have to interview with the district. And then, if they make it through the pool, then they have the opportunity for the principals on the campuses to interview for those roles.
Are there any questions? Mr. Ochoa?
Got a couple of questions. So, the coaching, is that based just on content? Is that coaching on content? I'm just thinking from a first-year teacher's point of view, content is one thing. Trying to figure out how to lesson plan is, seems impossible your first year, but is it also coaching on classroom management and those sorts of things?
Yes. It, it factors all the components of instruction and sometimes it's informal coaching of, this is just how you, how we deal with all of the stresses and all of the responsibilities that you have as an educator because it is challenging, being a teacher is challenging. And so, yes, we provide coaching on all avenues of support because a great component of opportunity culture is for recruitment and retention. And so, yes, we want classroom management. Those are some of the first skills that we look at and we use a waterfall document that we look at which are the most, the highest-leveraged skills. And a lot of that is classroom management and planning. And then, it progresses as you build your instructional practices. But yes, they provide coaching on the highest-leverage item that's going to move that teacher forward the fastest.
And how many, how many MCLs do you, like on a campus, Parkdale size, would you see?
Four.
For the whole, for the whole campus?
Yes, four on my campus, one MTRT and I have my four, three reach associates, three and then two teacher.
Okay. Is there a, is there a sort of a ratio, MCLs to students that you look at or what is the, what's the goal?
Well, like, like Mrs. Cox alluded to, like, so they coach, mine are MCL two, so they coach six teachers on their team. And so, within those six teachers, we are departmentalized, so every teacher has about roughly, I would say, forty students. So, that MCL is responsible for her forty students, plus the forty students from those other teachers as well. That's a lot of reach.
They volunteer for that?
And, well, they don't, you know, it's, it's, at first, you kind of have to, you know, let them know, what does it all entail? And so, because it is rigorous. I'm not going to say it's not rigorous and it's a lot of time management because like Ms. Munoz says, you are out of your classroom and you are observing teachers because you have to figure out what is the highest-leverage action set that they need to grow. And then, sometimes it's modeling. They go in and might teach a lesson to the teacher so the teacher can take notes and gets, you know, and what we're, practice that we're asking her to observe. And then, sometimes they team teach, you know, so sometimes they have to teach together. And then, the MCL always follows up after they do all these practices and sees the teacher implement it independently. And so, then they focus on the next skill when they do another observation, depending on the growth of it.
Yep. Well, that's, I mean, I think it's fantastic. You know, from a, from a new teacher point of view, I think it's something new teachers have been begging for, for as long as there've been teachers. As far as the, the money to fund them, you said it comes out of the school, the individual's school budget?
Yes. It, um, each campus is allocated funds and so, it comes out of their local. And then, also, we utilize state comped and our total one to fund positions and extra stipends.
Okay. We have, we have money for that?
And we have, within the budget, they have to, you, they have to look at their budget and determine how those funds are going to be spent. So.
The principals are given the freedom to, to make the?
Yes, the principals, it's up to each campus. We go through a design process and it's up to the campuses of what the implementation looks like. Do they want an MCL on kindergarten, first grade, or do they want to start like at a fifth or third grade? Do they want it departmentalized where they're working, that MCL is just working with ELAR or is it like grade level? So, the model itself, that's where OC is very flexible. It's up to the campus administration to determine the best needs that meet the needs of their campus. One thing I didn't highlight is that our MCLs work a tremendous amount of extra hours and they put so much work into our campuses. And so, I do appreciate all the work that our MCLs and all of our staff on our OC campuses are doing.
And Quarter, we?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Got a question for you. We all have budgets, which means we all have to work within a fixed pie. I'm assuming that if we're giving stipends to teachers to do more work, we're increasing pay per teacher, that means that there are going to be fewer people on your campus. Is that correct?
Yes, you, yes, you have to, that's a challenge. When I was getting ready to construct next year's budget, which is this year, I had some positions especially, that were not filled. So, I used those. You have to be very strategic in how you're going to do that. And you also have to determine, like, every campus is different. So, what are your needs? What are you wanting to do with your campus? And so, when I really took into consideration, when I was ready to start this year was, I knew that I needed to build a foundation. I knew that we were working in three through five. It had a great, we had a great outcome, right? So, how could I provide those teachers in K two, which are the foundation? And we don't have to place so much catch-up in three through five, to be honest with you. That was my thought is, how can I start this early enough that our teachers are strong enough that when our students do hit that third grade, that they are ready for third grade? And so, but I think every campus is, they really have to look at their own budget. And fortunately for me, I, I mean, it took a lot of strategic.
Sure.
They can all tell you, when we had our meeting, I had my sheet laid out and, you know, you have to really analyze and see what's really important and what you need at your campus.
Is it a good fit for you?
I feel like it's a good fit for me, yes. I can't imagine, really, now that I've done it, I can't imagine having a campus that has like maybe once or twice a week professional learning communities for my teachers. I just don't see how they would really be successful with that because the time that they spend in there and, you know, it encompasses so many things that they are strategically in there for that purpose and that purpose alone, which is to plan together, to support one another, to talk about content, to do the data analysis, you know, it's, it is very, very strategic. I was a middle school assistant principal and, you know, we had a professional learning community with those teachers every day and they had a conference room every day. And when I went back down to elementary, I was just like, how could we not have this here every day? You know, how are we going to function? And so, it, you have, like I said, you have to be creative and we were able to construct a schedule and we've constructed it again this year, you know, we constructed it again this year and it's worked. I just, it's really, really worked and I'm, I'm really happy with the results. I really am. I think that it is very purposeful.
One more, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, helping the teacher, helping the administrators on the campus, helping have a plan, we do all of these things so we can help our children. So, I'm curious, how do the benefits that it offers the teachers, how do the benefits that it offers a principal or a district have a direct impact on the children that are in those classes? And then, the, not the behavior, but the engagement between the teacher and the student in those classes as well? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Basically, how does it help the kids?
Well, like Mr. Gillian was able to see today, a teacher resident teach, they don't realize, to be honest with you, there's no difference in the teaching. They, you said, this is a student teacher, if this is the reach associate teaching the class, you don't see a difference because those people are also in the professional learning community. So, that reach associate who is a highly qualified peer professional, she's planning. She is prepared for the instruction whenever that MCL steps out of that classroom. Learning never stops. And like I said, I, I knew we were going to grow, but I think the amount of growth that we had for our students was really attributed to that because the learning never stopped. And you know, I think in some cases, if a teacher had stepped out, they might have some work to do independently. It was not like that. It was purposeful instruction that was in, that was going on, there was no delay in that. In, in my opinion, and I'm sure Ms. Munoz feels that way too, is, is they have to prepare as MCLs when they do step out of the classroom. I mean, we have schedules that are set every week of who they're observing, when they're observing, when they're having a coaching, you know, conversation. And my AP and I, you know, we attend those coaching conversations with them just so we also know what is the teacher working on. It's, like I said, I feel like it's very strategic.
Yes, please.
So, I know a lot of the emphasis has been MCLs coaching teachers, but what you're talking about with the students, I'm directly responsible for them. And so, I go into those classrooms and I actually work with small groups. So, like last year, for example, overall of second grade, I knew every second grader by name. And what, how that kind of helped them is like, so if they're in this classroom and they're having a rough day, they go down to Ms. Munoz because we build, I build those relationships with those kids. It's not just me, my little island. I'm, you know, connecting with them. And so, they see me and they know me just like one of theirs. And so, I had a coaching conversation, well, a team conversation. I said, okay, I asked each teacher that I was coaching, you know, what is a strength? What is a weakness? Where do you feel like you need extra support? And each one of them said, you know, they gave me something like, okay, I'm struggling with this low group in reading. And so, I would go daily and go work with that low group. Or, you know, I'm really great with the low ones, but these GT kids, I don't know how to provide enrichment. And so, I directly worked with those and I would go and tailor to each teacher what they needed. So, I actually worked with, or still do, work with those children directly. So, that's also how they're growing as well.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
President, oh, I, I love, love everything that you guys presented. I love the grow-your-own aspect specifically. I think that I'm looking forward to our PTEC students becoming teacher residents and going through the process. My question is, I know you said that you expected growth because of coming out of COVID. Are we seeing the same amount of growth this school year? Has it been tested, done, that shows that we're on the same path? I know you said y'all expected growth coming out of the COVID years of this year. Post-COVID, in quotes, are we seeing that same amount of growth?
Okay, so, we just did our first interim analysis. So, we just did the interims, the very first one. And we're, we always want to be within a hundred points, right, of our student goals. That's what we really aim for. And so, looking at our data, and we also compare it to the region, the regions' data. So, for instance, I'll tell you, I was within a hundred of every one of those, all the straight down for three through five math and three through five RLA. RLA, I was only off by five. So, I mean, that, that to me speaks volumes. And then, but yes, I already see it, you know, the start first interim, then we'll do the interim again. And because we've now set our goals about what are the sales scores that our students need to have to be able to meet their growth measures in the middle of your interim, I'd like for you to ask me that question again. And I can tell you a little bit more on that because then we've already had our goals set. But yes, I was very happy with our first interim results. So, yes, I do expect it is, this is the, the year that we really need to make sure that we maintain that growth, right? I'd love to be a B again. As you can see, our shirts say that, Parkdale is the place to be because that was what we got. But I, we, we, we have the potential to be an A. And that's what we're here to do.
I like it.
And I really think that this is, this program is going to help us get to there.
One question. What happens when our positions are filled? So, as far as teachers going from the As to, you know, up to different levels, if we're selling kind of this path for our teachers, what happens when our, our leadership positions are filled, retention is working, people are happy they're staying? How do we maintain this system?
Well, one avenue is that we're expanding campuses. And so, there would be more leadership opportunities on other campuses. And so, I hope we get to where we have a problem, where we have a lot of candidates and not a lot of availability to move. And so, once we reach that, we'll be planning of how we further have our reach. We still have reach opportunities on the five campuses that we're currently at, just like with the MTRTs, where they work with just one. And so, we do have other avenues too with OC that we have not utilized as team reach teachers. And so, there are other different roles that we can add. So, did that answer your question?
Yes.
I'd like to add to that. We've talked a lot about building a pipeline of leaders and we're starting with teachers, right? And some of these teachers may choose to go on and lead some of our campuses in the future. So, we expect some to stay in the classroom and enjoy continuing, growing other teachers, but we do expect some to grow into other positions as well.
Is that a question, I'm sorry, is that a question that we ask, like a potential teacher candidate? Like, do you plan our, like I know you said, you plan our staying in the classroom, like I'm comfortable here. Do we ask them like, hey, do you plan our growing? Is this part of your path to become a principal or IS? Or are you planning on staying in the classroom? Do we consider that where we're bringing in new candidates for the program?
That isn't necessarily one of our questions in the interview process. Mainly, we are looking at the skills that they have and the leadership opportunity development. And so, our goal is just to develop the leaders. To me, I want good leaders in these programs, but I think those are probably just customary questions that our campus staff is also having is, as I, I know, when I was a campus principal, I would try to grow and I see opportunities in this area or have you thought about doing this area? So, I think those are probably more embedded in our day-to-day conversations of growing our leaders.
The one thing I want to add is, so, we have a teacher leader academy that we just launched last summer. So, the idea of that is to prepare these teachers to be instructional specialists, to be multi-classroom leaders. And I can tell you, I believe it was at your campus, you, you see these, you see some of these teachers, they really have these special gifts and you start tapping them like, you want to consider you're getting your master's degree, becoming an administrator. And some of these folks are already doing that. And then, they can start the aspiring leaders academy. So, so we have academies and, and support structures to do that. And then, all that's connected to our leadership definition and the work we're doing around leadership here in this district. So, it's kind of complex, but it's all really connected. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I want to thank you so much, Ms. Ortiz. I love that A attitude, like that expectation, you know, setting that expectation for our kids, for our staff. I think that is so important. Ms. Munoz, thank you so much for all your work that you do in and with kids. It is, you know, reiterate, it is, it is a hard job and pressure that you feel when, when you're, when you're in there and wanting to make sure that these kids are successful. There is a toll that every teacher carries and a burden that every teacher and administrator carries for their kids and their students. And so, just really want to thank you. I think the, Ms. Cox, I think the, having student teachers or reach teachers, what is, reach associates, I think having them in there, I just, I leaned over to Dr. Kinkan and I said, you know, student teachers who- I just, I leaned over to Dr. Kincaid and I said, you know, student teachers who can see the implementation of the classroom management is huge. Yeah, because that's the, back in my day, the teacher resident student team would come in like, almost like a couple of weeks after school had started. So you never got to see how they implemented the procedures, the structures, the management. And I think that is, especially if we're trying to keep them, I think that's huge. When we have vet teachers who, who can kind of show them the ropes and show them the art of teaching. So thank you so much for all your hard work. So appreciate it. Thank you. We're going to just take a quick five-minute break, restroom break, and then we'll be right back. Okay, we will reconvene at 8:18. And we are moving on to agenda item 11, item requested by trustees. We have discussed campus safety, behavioral stats for the district and what plans have been implemented to improve behaviors, review out-of-school suspension rates, in-school suspension rates, violent incident reports for our current school year and last school year, 2020, 2021, and the 2018, 2019 school year at each of our schools. Drug use on campus, violent incidents involving staff and students, intruder, outsider reported on campus. Data from 18, sorry, 2018 to 2022 for primary and secondary campuses. Dr. Warren?
Thank you. We are here this evening to provide the requested data as it's stated in the agenda item. And we are also going to provide a program update in relation to our multi-tier system of support. Between those two pieces, we are addressing the complexity of this particular item. And we want to do so in a way that really allows you to digest the information. So our presentation tonight will be in two parts. Suzanne is going to start in just a moment by sharing the, the data. And she'll go over those charts. There'll be an opportunity for some processing. And then I will do the second part of the presentation where it's about the update. Before we get into that though, I do want to provide some context for this. The years that are within this particular span of time that we're going to be presenting data about, each one of them has its own unique characteristics that allowed it to earn an asterisk of some sort. So whether we're talking about new leadership or changes in configuration or global pandemic, any number of things have happened in these ensuing years that really allow this school year, 2022, 2023, to be what we consider our, our benchmark year. So while we are going to present some data to you tonight that is addressing the requested information, I do want you to understand that there's not an apples-to-apples kind of comparison that can happen. And this year represents our beginning, if you will, of when the organizational structure and stability is in place to scale our supports. And so what you will see from this moment forward will be an opportunity for us then to truly make some comparisons based on the, the fullness of what's available rather than the individual pieces that we've been acquiring based on research and responding to needs in the previous years. So we'll start now with our data and then we'll move on from there.
So I put together data going back to 2018 up to current year. I stopped recording data this year on 11/30, which was the end of the first two, six weeks. So it's the first 12 weeks. Currently, we end our third six weeks tomorrow. And the way that I do the data is, once it all gets in and principals and stuff have a chance to put everything in, we do what I call cleanup, which I make sure everything's correct and then I do it again. So that's why the third six weeks is not in here because it does change depending on, sometimes there's inaccuracies or stuff. So we have a chance to actually go in and clean it up. So you had asked for by campus. I have it separated by middle schools, high schools, elementary schools, and then the complete total at the bottom. ISS as reported through our, through PMS, which we report to the state. So the previous years for 1819, 1920, 2021, and 2122, I pulled from our, on Data Suite, which is literally, it's a copy of the report that we send to TEA every summer when we submit our PMS data, our discipline data in the summer. We do that in the summer because again, like I was saying, it gives us the full year to make sure everything's accurate and cleaned up and it, and it's representative. On the left hand, well, I guess y'all look at, on the left-hand side is our in-school suspension and on the right-hand side is our out-of-school suspension.
My, my question, Madam President, my question is, is this data accurate? The only reason I ask that is because I see on the second page under violent criminal acts on campus, we have none reported. And I've, I feel like both of us were on campus and we co-witnessed violent acts take place. So I was just wondering, is it like a backlog of reporting? Is it a reporting issue? Is it, is it working the referrals? Or is this an accurate picture of what's going on on campus?
Yes. So on the second part, you, there were asked for specifics for possession, which is our O4 codes. There was a request for violent incidences between students and teachers. I interpreted that as our code 28th and 27, which is student-to-student assaultive behavior and then student to, the way that the student code of conduct reads, it says volunteer or non-employee. So those are the ones that are in those next. The violent report that you, that had been asked for as far as the violent acts, there are certain PMS codes that are designated as violent, violent incident reports. So that's what I included on this report. So it has to fall into those particular codes by PMS that happen on campus.
So the, I'm just trying to get it clear. So the code, the way that you have to do the data might not be the same picture as if you were on a campus? You might see instances happen on, on the campus that aren't reflected in this data?
Yes, only because there are different codes for different incidences that happen based on what TEA and TASB define in our student code of conduct as, we have a code 21, which is the generalized code. It's pretty much anything that doesn't have its own code. We have a code 41, that's mutual combat. Last year, we talked about that. Then we have other codes such as a 28 or a 27 that are very specific. There are other codes that the campus has to investigate and determine is what happened matched this code? If not, it may be under a 21 or it may be under something else only because there isn't a specific code that fits specifically maybe what you saw or what was acting. They have to do with the code that actually matches. Now, in the description and the referral and that sort of thing, it's more descriptive. The code itself is, again, it's a code, it's a very simplistic, not simplistic, but very specific, unless it's a 21 that catches everything.
I have a follow-up. Are we, is there any way that you guys track like incident reports that the teachers do? Because I know a lot of the times that an incident report may not turn into a referral, which if it doesn't turn into a referral and it's not worked, it won't be reflected in the data. Is it a way that we keep track of the amount of incident reports? Is that reflected in the data we're looking at?
This is not reflected in here. I only gave you PMS reported codes, which is what we report to the state. So as you were talking about, sometimes teacher incidences, if the administrator does not give a PMS code, which is ISS, OSS, DAP, or JJ. So those are our codes. As far as those offenses that end up this way, then it would not be reflected in this. No, sir.
And how often is this happening? I know we heard earlier tonight about students not getting consequences. So what other consequences could there be besides ISS, OSS, placement, DAP, those things?
There is a myriad of those options. There's actually, in our student code of conduct, there's two pages worth of additional type of things that you can do on a campus that do not reflect anything that would be on here. We also have district things such as Saturday diversion. Most times campuses have the option for discretionary, which means they have the option to come with the consequence. They could say, we would like to do Saturday diversion in lieu of. And then if the parent and the student do not show up to that, then if DAP was originally on the docket, then that would be what they would do in return.
So it's possible that you could do a, have an offense on campus that will warrant you to go to DAP, but the campus principal could decide to do a Saturday diversion? And if you complete that, you would be back on the campus?
If it's a discretionary offense that they did, the campus administrator, whoever that might be, the principal or the AP has the option, if it's discretionary, to decide what that consequence is. There is a chart that TEA gives us and the codes are divided into, for lack of a better way, least to greatest. And as it goes, things become from discretionary to mandatory. And then sometimes it's mandatory they go to DAP or it's discretionary if they go to DAP. So again, it just really depends on what the code is, what the student did and whether or not this, how much room the principal has to decide what the actual consequence is.
This is my last question. I'm gonna let somebody else ask a question. How often do incidences, I guess, fall into the category where a principal or an administrator would be deciding whether to choose DAP or another alternative? I'm just trying to, I've seen a lot this year. I've heard a lot this year. I've witnessed personally a lot this year. So these numbers are shocking to see. So I'm just saying, is it, it's just a lot of instances where the principals are deciding, getting to decide the consequence, whether to send to DAP or ISS, OSS?
It really depends, quite honestly. So what it is, is each campus administrator has, when a teacher puts in a referral in the system, an incident, they get a cop, like get an email. Depending upon what that is, sometimes the teacher handles it in their class. Sometimes the teacher can go in and say, student was disruptive, I gave him after-school detention. But it's there and it's a copy because we don't do paper referrals anymore. So we're able to track that. If it's something that they send to the administrator, they have an option to say, this needs administrator action. So a lot, again, a lot of times, the teacher has a lot of options that they could do their own classroom behavior with it. If they feel that an assistant principal or principal needs to see it, they have admin action. The AP or the principal then looks at it. They will call on the student, they will investigate, they will talk to the teacher, they will do what they need to do. And then they have the determination and the option, based on what it is, to then decide what the offense, or what the consequence could be. It could be, again, lunch detention, Saturday diversion, after-school detention. It could be a conference with the parent, having them come up there. It could be a lot of things. Or it could be ISS or OSS, or they could decide whether it's discretionary or mandatory that DAP is what they need to do in that case. And then they have to submit paperwork to support their decision in that consequence, if it's DAP.
And is there like a allotted time that administrators get to work those incident reports? For lack of a better word, that's what we say in the schools.
Yes.
Let's say work the referral. So is it a allotted number of days or how many days is it there?
Not necessarily. So again, it really depends on what the action is. Once a student is put in ISS or OSS, due process starts for our students. And so within that time, if they're making the decision that DAP is the, is the outcome, they have three days to call student management and set up a hearing. That is due process as far as making sure that we don't prolong it to, you know, have a kid in ISS waiting and all that kind of stuff. They also have to notify a parent to make sure the parent's aware of any time their child's put in ISS, OSS, and notify them if they're going to have a hearing. If the student's special ed, then there's also steps that have to go there to make sure that an MDR is also taking place after the hearing. But as far as the time it takes, again, it really depends on kind of what the kid did and if they're coming straight to their office then, or they're looking at a referral in the, in their email later to say, okay, you know, Mr. Davis was talking again in class, so I'm going to call him in first thing in the morning and we're going to take care of this.
I, I think, and I give, thank you, I get about the DAP. I mean, if I'm a teacher, you're in my class, you do something that I felt like I needed to write an incident report on. Does that incident report have a certain amount of days to turn into a referral and a consequence? Or can you see it next month and still work that referral?
So yes and no. We want to make sure that if there's going to be a consequence like that, that it's closer to what happened so that the student can actually understand that's what they're getting a consequence for. There's not a specific, it has to be done within 12 hours. It has to be done within 24 hours. All of our APs and principals will get on there and try to work those as fast as they possibly can. And again, depending upon what it is, sometimes the principals or the APs are the ones that witness it or actually start the process themselves because it happened in a hallway or it happened in the cafeteria. It wouldn't be a teacher referral that they're starting and then, you know, processing out.
Incident reports, we're doing a good job of working them as they come in with teachers across the district?
I do believe so. Principals in campuses, they have the ability to run, like to keep up with their cohort. I'm kind of with Lena. I was a middle school person, so we had our cohorts, you know? So you could run a report that says, how many do you have unworked? How many do you need to, you know, look at again, that sort of thing.
Okay, Ms. Hamilton, please continue.
That's, that was the second page that I had up. Y'all just had any other questions about what that meant or what those were?
Any questions, Mr. Choa?
Yeah, I have a question. So just curious, if a kid is coded as sped, is there, is there a, are the consequences different based on their coding?
No, they are still, that's why we have an MDR. So ISS has no limit on the amount of days that a student's in there, except when it comes to sped. Each sped student is allowed 10 FAP-free days is what we call them. And maybe that's where, Mr. Davis, you're getting the 10 from because special ed students can only be out of placement, which means if they're in ISS or OSS, they can only be out of placement for a maximum of 10 days before you, the ARD committee has to come back together and say, we need to discuss the behavior. We need to come up with a plan, you know, what can we do? So if it's a special ed student, they do have to keep track of how many days they're out of placement.
Sorry. And so you have to call for a whole new ARD?
If you hit the 10 days.
Okay.
But that's for the entire year. So again, if we get something in student management and we notice, one of the questions that Mr. Saldana and I coordinated for student management ask is, is the student sped or 504? We want to make sure that they're not out of FAP days. We want to make sure that those have been taken care of because once they're out of FAP days, you have to have, have the ARD come together each day that they're in or they're out of placement after those 10 days.
Well, it's not consecutive 10 days. It's just cumulative.
Days all year.
Throughout the whole year. Okay. And that, that may be what Mr. Davis is trying to get at, I think, is, is if a student is coded as sped and, and has reached those 10 days.
Yes.
Unless there's a, an ARD that takes place, then there has to be, then that kid is just allowed to go back to class? Or, or how is that handled?
Not necessarily. You could, I mean, depending on, and I don't want to speak for the special ed department. I'm just saying, as, when I was a principal, we would have meetings before we ever got to the 10 days. So if you were in ISS and that was going to be your fourth day, I'm probably already calling my sped person on campus to say, he's going to be in ISS for three days. We need to have a plan in place now. You don't want to wait till the very last so that that kind of instance doesn't, doesn't happen where then you're out of days. But we're also trying to make sure that they're working on plans to make sure whatever behavior got them in ISS to begin with, they're looking at that to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Are we implementing that successfully on our campuses now, what you said you did where you were on a campus?
I don't know that I can answer. I'm not on a campus, so I don't know that I can answer that successfully and I'm not in sped anymore. So I mean, I would, I would say yes, that everyone's aware of those and I'm hopeful that everyone is working towards making sure that any student, whether they're sped or gen ed, they're working towards that behavior plan to like reteach and, you know, give them other things that they can do versus what they were doing before.
And just to clarify, my 10-day question was because I had got a, a couple of calls from some teachers who said, you know, their incident reports didn't go worked and then they went past the allotted time so that they, they didn't, their administrators were not giving a consequence because too much time had passed by because they had so many incidents to work. So that was more of what I asked about. Was it a, is it a time period? Or is it where you get to it, I can work the referral because this happened?
Again, we really want them to, it needs to be as fast as they possibly can. There's not a set time to, I can't, I don't really know how to answer that other than I know that they're doing them as fast as they can.
We heard that. We heard that we were slow in responding to some teacher referrals. And so we're having conversations at least at one campus about that because we got that feedback from teachers too.
I, I appreciate that conversation. I think this should happen at all campuses because I think this is, that's the issue that's happening across the district. So just to confirm, if a student is sped or 504, they have 10 allotted days, but after that 10 days, they can still be placed in school or out-of-school suspension? It just has to be an ARD meeting where that's discussed beforehand?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Gillian.
So you said, I want to see it on here, you said a
So you said, I wanna see it on here, you said a code 41?
Yes, for mutual combat.
Can you explain what that is?
That is, um, it's defined as mutual combat and the student code of combat, but it's a fight.
Okay. Do we have those numbers on here?
I did not put those on here, no.
Do you have the numbers for the schools?
Not off the top of my head. I mean, I know kind of where we are now compared to last year, just as a general district, but not by campus.
Just this year, do you have the numbers for our secondary schools?
Not by campus. I have for the whole district, just because that's what I work on at the end of the week, or at the end of the semester, so.
Do you have them, Dr. Warren?
The data that's presented tonight is in direct relation to what was requested. So we are more than happy to complete our cycle of review and present that information to you.
You don't, you don't have the numbers for the individual campuses as far as mutual combat?
No, that was not part of the request.
Mr. Gillery, the request was for, if we look back on kind of the agenda item.
There's all relevant information as far as what the request was.
Sorry, where does it say? Where does it say that?
Can I ask a question while y'all are reviewing? I, I, I think I'm shocked that mutual combat wouldn't lead to ISS or out-of-school suspension. And I think that's why I didn't realize that I needed to ask for hand-to-hand combat-specific numbers. Because, and so is that, I know we just discussed that certain instances are up to the administrator who's working that case. Is mutual combat, is that one of those instances where we could say, "Okay, we're not gonna do ISS or OSS, we're gonna do Saturday diversion", so it wouldn't be reflected in these numbers?
That is defined by TEA, that is a discretionary offense. So yes, the campus has the ability to decide what the off, what the action is for that.
So these numbers wouldn't necessarily reflect if it's a lot of fights going on, or if it's a lot of hand-to-hand combat? They wouldn't necessarily be directly correlated to the stats that we're looking at?
The first page with the ISS and OSS is both mandatory and discretionary offenses. So it's for everything. It's not split up by offenses and then by what the consequence was.
So who's, who's responsible for having those, those numbers?
We track the numbers.
So you, so you, do you know the numbers for the campuses?
We do not have that information at this time. They are reflected within the first page in terms of the consequence that's been assigned. As Suzanne was pointing out, it is all-inclusive. So regardless of what the offense might have been, the consequence as it relates to ISS, OSS, or DAP are all within those, those
How often do you pull that report?
I'm sorry?
How often do you pull the 41, code 41, how often do you pull that report?
I do those every three weeks.
Okay.
It's that code, but I, I pull every code in the system.
Okay, so the last time you looked at those numbers, what, what was that number for the secondary campuses?
I don't know for the secondary campuses, I know for the whole district. I'm sorry, I just, I did it as a whole campus overall, how many, as a total.
Y'all have never, if you have a problematic school, you never look at those numbers individually?
No, I do. I'm saying, I just know the number off the top of my head right now for the whole district, not by campus.
Okay, round about the last time you saw the 41 numbers for the individual secondary campuses, what did, what did those numbers look like?
They were slightly higher than last year, but not significantly.
Tuckin', huh?
I'm sorry.
Just this year?
This year?
Yes, just this year, what does, what do those numbers look like?
I, I, I don't know that I can give you that accurate number.
So Ms. Hamilton, could you email that to the board whenever you do? Yeah, if you could just email that to the board so that we have those numbers and are aware. I know that this, yeah, this, this, this table has a lot of numbers on it, so I, yeah. So if you just, Mr. Gillery, specifically, you're asking for code 41, is that correct?
Code 41 for the individual campuses, secondary campuses, university, high school, Waco High School.
Okay, so code 41 on secondary campuses, if you could get, whenever you get that information. I guess the, if it would be okay with the board, if we could just get that information, I guess after this six weeks? You can pull all the relevant current data and then email that to us, if that's? So we'd be looking at that maybe in January. Is that, is that, is that a good timeframe, or?
Suzanne, as she mentioned, is going to be pulling that data tomorrow anyway, because it's the end of the next three-week cycle.
Okay, great.
Madam President, I would just like to say, whatever data, whether that's incident report data, it's 41, we wanna see it. I wanna see data that can paint an accurate picture of what's going on on campus. Because right now, you're telling me I'm looking at this, but this might not reflect everything that's really going on on the campus. So you guys are the experts. So I would like to see data that could show me that we're getting better, or we're not getting better, or how we're trending with behavioral incidents. So if that means individual teacher incident report data, if there's violent fight data, whatever, whatever codes we need, we just want an accurate picture, an accurate picture of what's going on on our secondary campuses.
Dr. Warren, thank you so much. So again, getting that, just whenever you, whenever you pull down that information, just email it to the board, I think it, yes, so we are, yes, we're gonna finish the presentation.
One of the things that we wanted to point out, which your questions help reflect, is that the data is just that. Those are numbers, they are trackable, they, some of them reflect things that are required by the state, some of them are things that we have found to be important and strong catalysts for conversations. But what we are really interested in is the humanity that is within those numbers and making sure that we do have a comprehensive, accurate understanding of what's happening on our campuses. That comes through, not through data points on a chart, but in our interactions with them. And to that point, the data does not represent a vacuum where it stands alone. It really stands as the beginning of a conversation, an opportunity for us to work with our campuses to ensure that all students really are able to access a safe learning environment. With that in mind, we have been intentional about structuring a multi-tiered system of support. We have mentioned to you along the way how we have been gathering resources and building this out. And this is our benchmark year. I'd like to go through these next few slides and just point out a few highlights of the kinds of things that are at each level of that system. So for Tier 1, these are opportunities, resources that are available to all students. It's considered foundational. These are the things that are listed up there, beginning with our SEL curriculum, Character Strong, which is available to all of our students. The full-scale implementation is done in cohorts. So we have Cohort 1, which includes our secondary campuses, all of our secondary campuses. And they are working through that with the support of our SEL and counseling coordinators. Even those campuses, though, that are in Cohort 2, those counselors have access to the core curriculum and so are able to use that in support of their social-emotional learning efforts on the campus. No Place for Hate is an opportunity for our students to really be at the helm of designing and sustaining a learning environment that they deem safe. So it really allows them to be co-creators of an environment that they feel will allow them to be at their best. Most of our campuses are participating in that this year. Every year, we've seen a steady increase, and we're really pleased to see that our campus leaders are valuing student voice in terms of what it needs to look like and feel like on their campuses. Behavior Bootcamp happened for the first time this past summer. That was an opportunity that was incentivized for our new teachers and our new-to-the-district teachers. They had five days where the whole focus was on behavior and learning to view behavior as communication, being able to determine what the root cause may be of the behaviors that they're seeing, and being filled to the brim with strategies of how they can address behaviors that are disruptive or unsafe. This was led by one of our best resources internally, and we also partnered with a vendor who's been working with us in both our general ed classrooms and in our special ed classrooms to address behavior in a very deliberate way. The Behavior Academy is an ongoing project that is allowing us to support our campuses as they build their own multi-tiered systems of support. So our campuses have a number of resources. Many of these resources have existed for years, they've been available to them for a long time. However, it's bringing it all together in a way that best meets the needs of your campus that is really important. And so with our Behavior Academy, we have teams of both district and campus administrators going out, meeting with the campus behavior teams, and guiding them through the application of what they, what they're being taught as best practice and to what that actually looks like on their campuses. The Stop It app, as you all are aware, is our anonymous reporting system that is available to everyone. So students, parents, teachers, community members, anyone who sees something that they consider to be unsafe, they can report it through the Stop It app. And then the camps administrators are notified and are able to process that in a timely fashion. The Universal Behavior Screener is also a continuation of work that we've started before. It is a efficient way for us to determine how our students are doing individually in terms of safe, respectful, and responsible behaviors. It is a first step that allows us then to have a conversation about what kinds of things do we really expect of our students and how do we support each one in being able to deliver those expectations? And then this year, with the new start of Director of Attendance, we are ensuring that attendance is part of the general conversation. So it always has been important for us to have our students on our campuses and have an opportunity to access the, the skills and the artistry of our teachers and the various resources. This year, we just happen to be really frontlining it so that our campuses are able to be very strategic in how they're supporting the campuses.
The Universal Behavior Screener, when is that done?
The Universal Behavior Screener is actually done three times during the year. So it's done within the first six weeks, and then it's done again during the middle of the year. We'll have our next window opening in January. And then it's done again at the middle, at the end of the year. And at each step along the way, that really is designed just to capture attention, not to designate a student as, with a particular label.
That's, all of our students we're screening three times a year?
All of our students at the elementary and middle level and all of our freshmen at the high school level.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Choa.
Behavior Bootcamp, who do, are we, is that a requirement? How do we determine who's going to that?
It was an incentivized opportunity. So our new teachers and our new-to-the-district teachers had the opportunity to earn a stipend per day for their participation. So it was not a requirement, but it was strongly encouraged, and they were able to get paid for their participation.
It was, it was before they were on contract, and so it was on a volunteer basis. I think we had 75 teachers who participated in that. We used ESAR funding, and I think we paid them $200 a day.
I think it was $300.
$300 a day, sorry about that. But we paid them to attend, and we got the ones that we could. Not everyone was ready to start prior to their contract, but we got a good number and it was beneficial to them.
I have a question. The SEL curriculum, who's, who are those? Is that for Tier 3 students? Is that happening at our every campus? What, what score, can I get more information about the SEL?
This is part of our foundational effort. So all of our students on those campuses in Cohort 1 have access to Character Strong. It is delivered by our campus teachers. They have a plethora of resources. They were, they received training on it during the first several weeks of school, so they would know how to use the resources that are available to them. Those who are in Cohort 2, so not officially launching Character Strong this year, those counselors still have access to all of the materials and are able to embed them in their, their lessons with students.
So the students are getting the SEL curriculum in their classes every day? So like each class, the SEL is embedded into the curriculum of every class?
It is definitely a standalone. When we are beginning something of this magnitude, we wanna make sure that it has its own moment in the spotlight, if you will. The scheduling of it is left to the campus administrators to build time for that. It is somewhat easier for our middle and high schools because they have a little more flexibility in the, the way that they divvy up the schedule. But there is a designated time for the curriculum to be delivered on every campus.
Like, where time, like at Waco High, where they have where time, they would do the SEL curriculum with their, with those where time students?
Yes, they could have.
Okay. And No Place for Hate, are we, are high school campuses with No Place for Hate yet? Okay, and do we have data to show, like, okay, this is where we were before No Place for Hate? And this is, do we have data to show that it's working? I had that same question for Stop, the Stop It app and No Place for Hate. Glad we got those designations, but I'm just trying to say, are we seeing the results from it?
Again, I would say that this is really our benchmark year, that we'll be able to provide that kind of comparative data for you in the years moving forward. For all of the things at each one of these tiers, it's very difficult to tease out the individual impact. It's more a collective impact that we would be able to show.
And what do the attendance incentives look like?
Again, that varies by campus. But our campus administrators have been incredibly creative in the ways that they are encouraging students to be present. At an upcoming board meeting, we will have Dr. Edison present to you about the kinds of things that are happening specifically around attendance. So at Tier 2, this is, students are designated as Tier 2 based on some kind of catalyst. So that might be the results of the Universal Behavior Screener, it might have been a teacher recommendation, it might have been some observation or something that just alerts a staff member that a student needs more or different in order to meet expectations. At Tier 2, the support is targeted. So it is available to those students who've been identified as needing just a little something extra. Of those kinds of things that are available at Tier 2, it includes de-escalation training, which all of our campus leaders have participated in, and also staff that are specifically tasked with providing interventions for students who need additional support. So that training is designed, to a certain extent, to help everyone, but it's really put in place with those students who need something extra, and that's what Tier 2 represents. Our behavior staff are on our campuses specifically to work with a, again, a small group of students who need additional support beyond what the, the teacher might provide. Because we recognize that mental health can be a contributing factor to the whys of the behaviors that we see on our campuses, we are continuing to partner with the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute in order to identify innovative strategies and resources that we can bring into our circle of care and be more proactive with the support that we're providing our students. Our peer professionals are receiving training throughout the year, and this actually represents a collaborative efforts across departments. That includes student services, but it includes other departments as well. The next session will be in January. We use our time during these sessions to ensure that they have the, an opportunity to practice strategies that align with their particular responsibilities. And then Tier 2 is when the broad conversation about the importance of being at school every day becomes more in the form of interventions. So again, as soon as there seems to be a pattern of absenteeism, our campuses are intervening and using our parents' campus, parent-campus liaisons, our counselors, mentors, other folks to really ensure that students understand that we want you here at school.
Question, Dr. Warren?
Mr. Gillery.
What campuses are you doing this program? Are you doing it at all the campuses?
Which program are you referring to?
The tier systems that you're speaking on.
The multi-tier system of support is something that is district-wide. So, yes, it's happening at all campuses.
So, I've visited Parkdale Elementary just over the last two weeks, University High School, Waco High School, Carver Indian, Spring United. And just at Waco High School, just today, I went by there and you had over 100 students in between classes. They were walking the halls, not going to class. You have students on campus that have over 190 absentees. I'm trying to see how all of this fits. Just today at Waco High School, you had six fights there. Principal AP was knocked over and her Christmas cards were taken from her and stolen. I'm trying to see, is this happening at this? That's why I asked about the secondary numbers. Last week, you had multiple fights on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. There are videos that are going viral across the city. Individuals are seeing it and you're telling me we have Stop It apps and behavioral staff that are trained in de-escalation training and I haven't really seen that at the secondary level. So, I'm trying to see, are you saying that these things are? I know you said something about benchmarks, but I don't see a behavioral system or even a behavioral plan in place at the secondary campus that I'm speaking of. Is there an actual plan, behavioral plan in place at Waco High School? I'm going to ask that specifically because that's, it's no. We have teachers that have come over the last few board meetings. We have a nurse here today and you're telling me that we have these things in place, but I'm not seeing it practiced on that campus.
And I would say to you, that's a problem. So, there is a definite difference between the expectations and the practice and the planning and what you might see on any given day. And when that discrepancy exists between actions and words, then that's where we actually escalate for both our students to Tier 3, but also for our campuses in terms of the support and guidance that we provide them.
This has been happening for two school years. And this school year is no different from last year. It's probably worse. What are we doing? That's my question. This is the reason why this was an agenda item. What are we doing to fix that campus?
I'm not here tonight to speak about a particular campus, but I will answer your question by saying, at the point that we see that our best efforts are not good enough and we have an unsafe teaching and learning environment on a campus, that means we have to go back and we need to reevaluate and we need to add more and different until we can actually create and sustain that learning environment.
This is year four. This is not year two. This is not a benchmark year. This is year four.
When we look at all the different conditions that have changed and impacted, Mr. Gillery, these are not excuses. These are the realities of this moment. And when we look at data, we look at every bit of data that our students and our staff members are presenting to us. That is the truth. So, it is not a good thing when we see this continuation of conditions despite the kinds of interventions and changes that have been made. When the problem still exists, that means we still have work to do.
Waco High School is being ignored. If you look at University High School and you look at Waco High School, Waco High School is being ignored. And there's a problem over there and we need to correct it. If this is not the meeting to talk about that, we can talk about it with the superintendent. I understand that. But it's being ignored and I thought we would get information to show the proper numbers. I thought we would get transparency. We're not getting that.
We gave you exactly what you asked for, Mr. Gillery. And Waco High School is not being ignored. We had staff on the campus doing listening sessions with teachers. We've been actively working with the principal. We have a whole new leadership team on that campus. And they need the time to get acquainted with their students and to get systems and structures in place.
There are no administration.
Madam President.
Okay, let's hold on one second. Hold on one second, please, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Warren, for acknowledging places that the administration sees where there are gaps and is going back and reworking a system that could be sustainable on the campus, offering support. I think that is the gist that this entire board would say is, when there are discrepancies in our systems and the outcomes of those systems, it is the, I want to speak for the entire board because we haven't done that, but I would say the majority of the board is saying, whatever systems need to be put in place, continue to do that, continue to monitor. If you need to bring agenda items here that we can wholeheartedly pass in a budget, do it. You know, whatever system needs to be put in place or just as you guys and the administration goes to take a look at things, really, just want to, there is enthusiasm from the board to do whatever it takes to help our campuses and to help our kids.
Madam President.
Yes.
It's not enthusiasm. It's not enthusiasm. We're scared for our kids. So, we can say, we can say that it's not enthusiasm. I understand everything that's being said. I appreciate the work that's being put in, the de-escalation training for our teachers. I want to see that for our students because I'm not seeing it. I'm not, when I'm talking, when I'm on campus, you mentioned mentoring was part of it. I've been asked to be mentor at several campuses and when I asked about what additional supports they're getting as de-escalation training or mental health sessions, I'm told that that's not happening. I want to, I'm sorry. Do I need to take a minute? I was asking, do I need to hold on a minute?
No, no, you can keep going. I was just trying to figure out.
Okay. I was saying the Meadows Medical, Mental Health Policy Institute, what is coming out of their partnership? What have we implemented that they've recommended is what I want to see. Also, behavior staff-wise, I'm shocked to see that on here because we've cut so many behavior staff across the district and we're losing a lot of behavior staff. And our president just said that we would wholeheartedly pass for raises, but these are things that have been being asked for for years for our parent professionals, specifically in behavior. So, I was just wondering, what are we doing in those things? The de-escalation training, how is that going from teacher to student? What is coming out of our partnership with the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute? And how are we retaining our behavior staff? Because from what I see and what is happening across the district, we're losing a lot of them, right? I don't think they have like two parents at Waco High right now. So, I'm just wondering, what are we doing or retaining? And I get the training to make them be more efficient at working, but I wanted to know about retention as well.
The retention question, and let me say that many of the things that you've asked about represent partnerships that we have across departments. And so, I can speak to Student Services role in that, but then there are other pieces that folks in other departments, HR, campus leadership, would have to supplement. Part of what we're doing to retain all of our staff members is making sure that they have strategies and an opportunity to practice those strategies in real-world scenarios before things happen. And so, the de-escalation training that our staff members have been afforded have allowed them to have those conversations, to ask those what-if questions, to practice, to challenge what they know to be true versus the idealism that might be reflected in the resources that they're being given. And then, those strategies have to actually be used and they have to be practiced to a point where there is a muscle memory that allows the individual staff member to retrieve that particular strategy and keep retrieving strategies until there's an opportunity for de-escalation to happen. We do have different resources available on our campuses. You mentioned Waco High. One of the things that is in place at Waco High right now is the Bear Project. They are working with both teachers and students directly on skills and strategies related to self-awareness and self-regulation. These are the kinds of things that allow both the student who might be feeling dysregulated and in danger of demonstrating a behavior that is unsafe or disruptive to recognize and come up with another way of handling things. It's also allowing those teachers to have access to someone whose specialty is managing those kinds of tense moments and getting that kind of in-the-moment coaching and support. So, there, the whole point of a multi-tiered system of support is to have a variety of resources and structures in place that allow our campuses to customize according to what their needs are. Those pieces have to be used with fidelity and there also has to be an ongoing effort to evolve into things that really are going to match the current needs. So, there is an active conversation right now about ensuring that, in particular, Waco High, is able to get the staff that they need and hold on to that staff. Part of that involves professional learning, which is a piece of what Student Services will offer and continue to support them with. We're not going to sugarcoat or ignore any of the problems. That's the whole reason for us to look beyond the numbers to the reality of what our teachers and our students are saying about their lives on our campuses right now. That's what we are responding to whenever there's a particular emergency or crisis. But more importantly, it is an ongoing focus for our department where we are constantly working with both external resources like the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute, of which we are involved right now in a collective based in North Texas, where there are a number of resources that we have, we've had access to and those are making their way to our campuses. But we have to make sure that those foundational pieces are in place and are happening with the kind of consistency that allows all of these additional targeted supports to actually be impactful. So, it is, it is a work in progress. We are not done.
Where is the restorative piece? I've been on a couple campuses and I was.
Mr. Davis, hold on one second. We do have quite a lengthy closed session that we are going to do and that we still need to go into. And we still have another item to go through. Is this going to be kind of a quick one or is this?
Am I not allowed to ask a question? Are we on a time limit as a trustee?
Well, there isn't a time limit. I'm just making you aware that we are going to go into closed session and if we could just kind of.
I got you. Our kids are going through a lot, so I have to make sure that I understand what's going on. I'm wondering how we could have restorative coordinators, but I'm not seeing restorative practices. So, are we practicing restorative justice on our campuses? Where does that piece fall into the system?
At this point, restorative practices is not a mandated implementation on our campuses. It is in place and it is also a training, an opportunity that we have afforded to our campuses. We have experts both internally and there are a couple of external vendors in particular with whom that we've worked. So, it's, again, part of the shared responsibility that we have with a multi-tiered system of support is that there is a framework that we, as a district, need to build. There are expectations that we have to put into place. There are resources that we need to provide. We need to be able to explain the whys and the hows. And then our campuses have to have the freedom to make those selections that are really going to serve them well.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Again, if there are any questions at any of the trustees, because this item is not an action item, this is a discussion item. If there are further questions that you have, if you could reach out to Dr. Kincanon, maybe we can schedule a meeting with Dr. Warren and Ms. Hamilton. Again, in the interest of time, we have a lengthy closed session that we have to address.
Point of information. Peter, can you come clarify for us what's going on right now?
Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis. Can we have this discussion? Pete Russell, could you help me with the legality of discussion question instead of an action item?
A board like this board has an agenda item that's a discussion item and the board has not established by board policy, general time limits for discussion items, nor has there been a motion and a second and a board vote to place any time limit on a specific item for this agenda, then the discussion continues for as long as the trustees want to discuss it.
So, do we make a motion then to close it? I mean.
Board members can make motions in accordance with Robert's Rules of Orders. For a motion to limit debate, it requires that the person be recognized by the chair. There has to be a motion to that effect. There has to be a second. There is no debate on that and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass such a motion.
Madam President, this is the last comment and we can go to closed session. I heard that it takes time for this system to work. Our kids don't have time.
I agree.
And I'm just, I'm just going to say this and we can move on. Some of our kids are now in their junior year and they've been dealing with this all of high school. Some of our kids are in eighth grade. They deal with it all of middle school. So, we're beginning to set into a culture in our district. So, I would really want us to look at if the system that we have in place is working. And if it's not working, please find a system that does work for our kids here at Waco High School because we can't afford five more years of experiments. And that's with all due respect because I know you guys are working hard to find a solution. I have to believe that that's what we're doing. What I'm saying is that we have to find something quickly and we have to pivot. If this isn't working, we need to pivot because our kids can't go through their whole educational experience with this being the culture. And the longer that this goes on, the longer that it will take us to change this around, especially, especially with the gang violence aspect of it. Every time there's an argument, every time there's a fight, every time there's a brawl, it sets in and digs its claws into our district. So, we have to be very proactive, move very swiftly, pivot on a dime to make sure that we're using a system that's actually being effective in addressing the behaviors or the issues that we're seeing. And that's all I have to say. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Dr. Warren, did you have a final comment?
There is a Tier 3. Let me say that I absolutely would never allow any student to be sacrificed in the pursuit of a perfect system. Our students don't have that kind of time. The system that we are building, multi-tiered system of support, by definition, provides a framework on which we can add any number of strategies, an endless amount of resources, many, many partnerships. The availability is truly up to us in terms of ensuring that our students get what they need. When they're not getting what they need, when they are unsafe, then we are not done. And so, we continue to pivot. We continue to research. We continue to implement. We do whatever is necessary because that is why we are here. At Tier 3, these are the things that we are highlighting for now. This is the part of a multi-tiered system of support where we move from targeted support to personalized support. That may involve particular behavior plans for our students. It could involve transition plans for students who have been at our DAEP and are returning to their home campus, want to set them up for success. We have a vape detectors pilot that's going to happen at University High School to determine feasibility before our new buildings open so that we'll be able to open them with the right equipment in place, knowing that it is effective. The attendance intervention at this level is more personalized than the group or targeted support that may happen at Tier 2. We are only here to serve and support our students and our staff members and to really make sure that they have access to that safe teaching and learning environment. make sure that they have access to that safe teaching and learning environment. And until that's done, our work isn't done. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Warren. Okay, on to our next item.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yes, Mr. Ochoa.
I just want to thank Dr. Warren, and I, I hope you have, I hope you understand that as a board, we should be the first ones to say, you need to let us know what we can do to help you. Because ultimately, we can't go into those schools, we can't make things right overnight. So you need to let us know in any way possible what we can do to help correct this. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item, 11B. Discuss, take action regarding the safety of the design for Tennesse Middle School, G.W. Carver Middle School, and Waco High. Mr. Gillory and Mr. Davis.
Well, guys, we're back here again, discussing the safety of a design that I feel like our community has spoken on and gave their decision on what they think should happen. I've gotten a lot of questions on why request this agenda item. Not only has there been changes, different TEA proposed rules that might be changing, but also our community wants to discuss this, and our community wants us to have this discussion. So that's the point, because we're ultimately here to represent our community. So that's why I feel like we need to have this discussion if our community is reaching out to us, asking us to. The glass walls, bottom line, I don't think is safe. I, I'll stand by that. I, I think from, the only trustee, again, that's worked at three, the, the main three schools we've been talking about, I just don't see it being feasible in the reality. I mean, we've heard from teachers who said that this will not work for them, that work at Waco High currently. We've, we've heard from teachers who worked at Tennesse. We've heard from teachers who work at Carver tell us that this design will not work for them and their students. So I think it's, it's, it would be only right for the board to consider what our community is begging us, literally crying out to us, asking us to consider a change to this design. So I think it's, it's only right for us as trustees that have been entrusted by our community to listen to our community, have this discussion, and actually seriously consider what our community has brought to us.
President Cordwick?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
I feel like we've had this discussion over and over, and we are a representative group. We each represent five different districts. We each represent different people that are in those districts, and two of our folks represent the whole city. We've had extensive conversations with folks in, I have had extensive conversations with folks in my community. I, by all means, have no desire to create a plan that is unsafe for our kids. At the same time, I have a magnificent desire to create a space that is suited for learning for the next forty years. You may not feel like you've had this debate. You may not feel like you have been heard. I feel like, as a board, we voted on this three times. You have been heard. We just disagree on what is safe and what is not safe, I guess. And that's the, I'll just say it, that's the frustrating thing. It's, it's as if bringing it up again and again says that the five people that have voted for this three times are stupid, and if we don't change our vote, then we stay that way. And, and that's not how a democracy works. That's not how a representative organization works. Just because you do not get the way you vote does not mean you weren't heard. It just means you weren't agreed with. And I know that's frustrating, because I live in Texas and I have lost lots and lots of elections. That's frustrating. But that's the way it works. And I, I don't know what else we can do, what else we can say. It, it's not gonna change. I have toured every school that we have had an invitation to go to except for one. I have seen these buildings in practice. I have talked with our architects. I have talked with our, Dr. Barrera. I have talked with the folks who have a hands-on deal in designing this. And, and I even read the thing that Mr. Gillory brought to us, and in the end, it says that "The environment for education shall never be sacrificed for safety." Read it all the way to the end, and that's how it closes, that we must put the environment of the student's ability to learn above everything else, even safety. I don't think we are sacrificing safety at all in our plan.
Okay.
I don't believe we're sacrificing safety at all in our plan. I'm adamant about that. I, I love the children in our district. I'm frustrated that we keep bringing this up over and over again. It's not gonna change. I don't think it's gonna change until we move in. I don't know what else to say, gentlemen, but, but this will not change. Your constituents may speak to you in a way that says, "Vote that way," and I applaud you for speaking that way. I, I have a lot of constituents in District Five, and I can tell you, the overwhelming voice is, "Beautiful plan." It's not the only voice, it is not the only voice, but in District Five, that is the overwhelming plan. We have to create environments that bring families into our district, that cause families to want to come to Waco ISD and not flee Waco ISD. And I, representative government just is frustrating sometimes, and I'm sorry about that. But this vote will not change. My vote will not change. I am so excited about the plans that we have coming up, and I, I don't want to talk about this anymore.
Madam President, you know-
One second, Mr.-
I respect, you're not wanting to discuss it.
Hold on one second. Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, hold on one second.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Okay, we're waiting.
So that's, that's, practice de-escalation and take a breath.
I, I'm not escalated, so I don't need to be de-escalated. I just wanted to speak.
Oh, okay, yes, you can, please, Mr. Davis, you can speak. There's some other lights on and have been on, so I wanted to make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak.
Okay. I appreciate it. Does anybody want to speak before I speak?
Mr. Davis, you have the full-
I was gonna say, trustee Grant, your vote is your vote. You represent your district, and if we bring it a hundred times, you can vote it down a hundred times. I will let the board know that if my constituents at District One, if our teachers across the district, if our students across the district ask me to bring this in front of the board, that's what will happen, despite anybody's feelings, despite any way you feel, because at the end of the day, it's not about the seven people who sit up here. In my mind, that is how democracy works. It's our community coming to us, saying that, hey, we disagree with this decision, this is what we want to happen. So that's what, that's why we will continue to discuss this, if my constituents continue to come for me, come to me and request this. We, we can, go ahead. I was just wondering, like, was this, do I need to stop with my-
No, you, you can continue. I was just telling you, there's other people with lights on. I'm trying to figure out who's gonna go next.
Okay, I just thought that per Robert's rule, they should ask for the board chair, so that's how you know who needs to go next. I, my, my frustration is that continually for the last, this board meeting and last board meeting, the whole, really several board meetings, this discussion has been on trustee Davis and trustee Gillory, and it's been made to seem like we're the only two people in the world that are concerned. And I've talked to several of you individually, and you guys have told me about the, the people who've reached out to you and the conversations you've had. So this is not a, a personal vendetta. I don't get an award if we don't put glass walls up, but what I am is concerned for our kids. I don't believe that a wall that is bulletproof would hinder the education of our kids. If that is the case, then why are we not considering changing some of our existing campuses? I go to university and I see no glass walls. Is that not a great environment to learn? I see kids learning and growing right and left when I go to university. So I think it's ridiculous to say, oh, if we don't have glass walls, then we're hindering our students' education. All of us up here, I doubt if any of us can raise our hands and say we, we went to high school in a glass box, but all of us were able to receive a quality education. So I, I think that we can't, you, we can't rely on the fact that we would be diminishing children's educational ability in a building if we don't have glass walls. We could just say we don't agree with changing the glass walls, but I feel like that is just not accurate, to say that if the glass walls are not up on these campuses, that students will not be able to learn, that teachers will not be able to collaborate, that teachers will not be able to coach, teach, and have shared spaces, because all of those things happen on our campus currently. We have collaborative spaces, we have teachers that collaborate with each other, they co-teach, they do, they, they combine classes. We have all that happening on the old campuses. So if it can happen on an old campus, I don't understand why we think that this one change to the design, which would literally be just the walls and classroom, classroom pods, would hinder the education of our students. I just feel like that's an inaccurate statement, and I wanted to make sure that we cleared that up.
Yes, Mr. Vedania.
I just, I just wanted to clarify some things. The TEA has passed a proposal to pass, and I think some misinformation was sent out that it's indoor glass, but it's outdoor windows on the ground floor, nothing to do with the inside.
Another point of clarification-
Mr. Davis, Vedania is speaking.
I have also, I have also talked to multiple teachers, and one reason they don't come up here is the same reason is that they, they feel that they would get ridiculed and, for agreeing to teaching that glass, that glass, I guess what they are calling it, is box, that they would get shunned, you know, they would be just talked down to because they're wanna teach in that, and they'll be questioned why. I mean, we shouldn't question somebody's opinion, but that's how a lot of teachers feel, and that's why I believe that some teachers have not come up here to support the design, because they do not want, they're under enough stress already, they don't need more stress from community members that don't agree with them, just because they feel that that's the best way that they want to teach. And, and Commander Wallace, I think the city sent us a note, kind of saying that that's, that they not, that they not support that, that that was kind of done on his own. Do we get that letter? Yes.
We have that letter.
Madam President, I just want to say, I actually went to a seminar TEA had, so it's actually gonna, they're in the proposal stage of writing the new rule, so it will be for all ground-level glass and windows. I'm not sure where that miscommunication is. You can go to the AFT's social media, you can read about it. They got a link on there for everybody. As far as teachers not feeling comfortable to come and support the design, if I remember correctly, we've had several teachers, I won't say several, we had two teachers come out and speak that they were in support of the design, and I would hope that no trustee on our board is going out and bullying our teachers into not coming to speak. The teachers that I spoke to have felt the opposite, that if they did come and speak their mind on the design, if they, if they were against it, that they would be reprimanded, and they were scared of retaliation. And I've heard that from teachers, administrators, police department. I've heard it from everywhere across our district. So I, I hope that teachers from trustee Davis, I hope that anyone in our city who feels the need to give their opinion on any issue that we're discussing, know that me as an individual, I would never belittle or downplay the things that you're saying, but I would take it into consideration. So we're, we're working on trying to bring a more inclusive environment, which I hope I've added to that since I've been on the board. Ultimately, the board, each one of us have, has our own vote, but again, community, just know I hear you. I hear you teachers, I hear you staff members, I hear you students, I hear you parents that are concerned about going to this, and if you guys want me to continue to have this discussion, please reach out, because I don't mind having this discussion, because ultimately, I represent the people out there and not the people sitting beside me. Even though I respect everyone, ultimately, my responsibility is to those out there. So I, I appreciate us being able to take the time to discuss this. It doesn't sound like there's much discussion happening. So trustee Gillory, did you have something before I make the motion?
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Davis. One, one second. Ken Cannon was saying that she could just speak to the legislation, and then Mr. Gillory, if you're ready.
Yeah, I, I'll speak to the TEA proposed rules regarding glass. I attended a meeting with the new chief of safety for the Texas Education Agency, and what the proposed requirement is, is that there would be intruder-resistant, intruder-resistant material on a window that is next to an entry that, that is not in a secured area, that is not bulletproof glass, that is not on the interior of a building, that, and it's not on all exterior windows, it's only on, in areas that are not secured, meaning that they're not in a fenced area. And the idea is that they would want to slow down any kind of person that might shoot, try to shoot through glass, and so this intruder-resistant is, material is a lower level, it's not a bulletproof material, and it's only a window that is next to an entry point that is in an unsecured area. And that was confusing to me the first time I read it, and I needed clarification, and so did several other superintendents, and we got that clarification straight from the Texas Education Agency.
Thank you. Dr. Cannon, Mr. Gillory, did you have it?
Yeah. I, I think the, the legislation alone showed that we, we're on the wrong side of this. Just the governor looking at it, the legislators looking at it, and, and we're trying to nitpick it in order to put in glass. We're on the wrong side of this. But as we continue to have this discussion on the board, events continue to happen like that legislation. And even, even within our district, I know I got a call about a teacher who was having nightmares about an intruder, and I directed that teacher to Chief Williams, and I know that he put her in contact to get the proper help. On December the 5th, we had a student at Tennesse Middle School who had gotten in some trouble, and he went through the process with the teacher and was asked three different questions. And the last question he was asked was, "What is one thing that you feel right now that no one else may feel?" And the student's response to that question was, "I feel like being a school shooter." And for that to be at top of mind for a student tells us, again, where we are as a society. And the country is looking at this way different than this board is looking at this. And, and like I said in the last discussion that we had, we should not be arguing about this. This is, this is ridiculous to me, and I hear a lot of people say, "I feel, I feel, I feel." But we had a, a teacher standing right in front of us to tell her, tell us how she felt and the fear that she has. And that teacher has a law enforcement officer that works for our district, but it's about how I feel. That's sick to me, but I'll, I'll move forward with the vote, but I, I just really wish that we would listen to the community, listen to the teachers who come in front of us, listen to the, the nation that is arguing about gun violence and the things that are happening within our schools and within our streets. I will continue to discuss this as long as I'm allowed to. That's how important it is to me. Again, this is, I always go back to, I write these plans, I review these plans, this is what I do. So, that's it.
Yes, Mr. Ochoa.
I have a question, I have lots of questions. So if we could just kind of go back to the beginning, can I ask, what, what led to your change of heart from the beginning? Is it Uvalde?
You're asking me specifically. I, I would, I would say we, we've had this same discussion. I feel like you asked us the same question at every meeting we've had, and we've discussed this. Nothing, Uvalde didn't change. Uvalde was another example of why we should be changing this, these, these designs. I think when, when we still had Kyle DeBeere here, I think he even read, word for word, the quotes from me and trustee Gillory. When, when this was first discussed, we brought up safety concerns. If you were- If you were, I could go back through the whole timeline of everything that was said. And it, it was brought to us, and it, and we were told about safe pods, safe areas in the classroom, that, that didn't shake out how it was supposed to. And it, it wasn't a safe environment. It's just, we're, we're, and we're only talking about the safety piece. We haven't even got into the distractions that it would cause. I see, I see trustees, we get distracted because people whisper with each other while we're having a discussion. So imagine what a sixth grader is going to do in class when you have a fight going on in the hallway and you could just look out and see it. So it, we, I, I think as trustees, we gotta, we should be discussing and taking action regarding the safety of the design of TMS, GW Carver, and Waco High. And not whether you feel like I brought it up too late. Because that's what I'm getting from these questions, is that you didn't bring it up soon enough. We brought up safety from the first time they showed me a glass wall. I brought up safety concerns. I see Trustee Quarterwick shaking her head, but that did happen. We can't go back and watch. We did bring up safety concerns. We asked what the safety implementation, uh, implementations was on our classroom with glass walls. That was brought up from the beginning. And I haven't moved from that point because my community did not ask me to move from that point. This is the last thing I'll say before I make the motion. To my community, please do not get discouraged by coming to the board and speaking. Please do not be discouraged by sending emails and text messages and, and giving phone calls and stopping me at HEB and stopping me when you see me on campus volunteering. Please don't stop those things because our board, that's what we are here to do. Is to hear the community and represent and do the things that our community are asking us to do. So please don't be discouraged by this situation and stop giving us your opinion. Just know we will continue, I will continue to advocate for this, uh, on this topic as long as my community reaches out to me and asks me to. So, uh, and, and of course, we're respecting the board decision, but we definitely have an obligation to our constituents first as trustees. So, uh, and I'll, and I'll end it at that.
Let me answer you. Yeah, I'd love to hear it. Okay. It's, it's pretty simple. Early on, the, the, the glass design wasn't presented. Once the glass design was presented, I brought up the question. Then once the, the glass design was presented, I voted it down. Before then, um, that, that design wasn't presented, we were moving forward as a board. Once the glass design was presented, I asked the question, voted it down. So that was, it, it was pretty simple once I saw.
So I went back and, and looked at all those board meetings. And, and there's, there's fly-throughs, there's fly-overs.
Flyover doesn't show the interior design.
Sorry, hold on, let, let him finish. Just let, let him finish.
Yeah, that's the, the animated walkthrough of the schools. And so, I, I don't mean any disrespect or whatsoever, but I, I know you're a safety expert. So my question is, you know, if you were okay with the safety from the, from the beginning, when you saw that first fly-through of the schools and what they're going to look like, and, and, and nothing's changed on the interior design, then why were they safe then and why are they not safe?
Once we saw the classroom hallways and they showed that it had a glass design, it wasn't shown in the earlier designs. Once it was shown, I'm repeating myself. Once it was shown, once the classroom designs were shown, that's when the question came up. That's when it was voted down. You can hear me on camera say, "We cannot vote for this" once I asked that question and it was answered by the architects. It's, it's that simple.
After it was the third school.
Hold on one second, one second. Mr. Guillory was speaking. And then Mr. Ochoa, oh, you're done. Mr. Ochoa, did you?
You were asking a question about the design. So I was saying, we were showing Waco High School first. We were, we brought up safety concerns. We were told that it would be different safety implementations put in place. So we were cool with that. We were okay with that. We said, okay, if, if safety implementations are put in place in individual classrooms where they have a safe place to retreat to, I could be okay with that. Still not a fan of the glass, but I feel like it was safe. We get GW Carver, I think was next after Waco High. Same exact design. We were told the same thing again. Then when Tennyson came, the reality is that there, after further questioning, there was going to be no changes to the designs. And that's when we voted it down. We were told several times that there would be safety, uh, there would be safety areas in individual classrooms. That's why we, it, it would have been a no vote for me from day one if we hadn't had that said from the architect team to the board. If we're watching the meetings back, we should see that. I don't know if we're watching just the clips that they shortened. We need to watch the whole meeting. Because if you watch it, you will see that back and forth happen. Where we're asking these questions, we're getting clarification. If you didn't see that when you watched, I don't know how else to say it, but that's what happened. The same timeline that we told you at the last meeting and the meeting before that, is it was presented to us, we brought safety concerns, we were reassured that there would be localized individual safe spaces in the classrooms for our kids to retreat to. That ended up not being the case. So that's why we couldn't stand by these designs. That's why we're asking for amendment, just to change the glass walls, not to change the flyover of the outside of the building, uh, just to change the glass walls. That's all that this, uh, this motion or this agenda item is to do. That's the discussion that we're having. That's why we didn't object, I guess, for, uh, Carver and Waco High because we were told that it would be changes or that it was already in place, localized safe spaces. Once we, once we found out at the Tennyson design level that it wasn't, that's why we denied, or we, we voted against that design, or I voted against that design. I, I don't, uh, I don't understand what information we're looking for. If Uvalde is the reason that people need, I think that's a really good reason. But that's not the reason. We, we brought up safety concerns before the Uvalde tragedy happened. But to me, the Uvalde tragedy should only, uh, to me deepen the need for us to change this design. It shouldn't be, uh, a reason to disregard school shootings. We, we see mass shootings and active shootings often, multiple places, especially in our schools, not just Uvalde, but we've seen several schools over the years. So with the trends, uh, Trustee Grant said, "We got to build schools for the next 40 years." I agree. So with the times changing and what we see happens more and more and more in our society, why wouldn't we design a building that would be safe if this situation does happen with one of our students? Um, I think one of the public comments they mentioned, that they see, okay, we're talking about something like me coming off the street with an AK. But that's not, that's not normal. We're talking about our kids and our staffs and our, and our teachers that are already in the building, trusted people that get into a building. I, I, I went to, I, I volunteer at Carver every week. And, uh, excuse me for getting your name, ma'am, but the front office lady is the best ever. I wish we could have her at every school. Because normally when I come to campuses, I get to just kind of walk in. They're like, "Hey." No. She's like, "Mr. Davis, let me see your driver's license. And let me get you a pass before I buzz you into campus." But that is not the reality of what happens on most of our campuses every day. It's normally a way to get on a campus. And even if I'm a trusted adult and I check in, nobody patted me down. Nobody knows what's going on. We don't have a clear backpack policy at any of our schools. We don't have metal detectors. So we're saying that we're just, uh, and I, I believe in faith, but faith with our works is also dead. We've mentioned that a couple of times. So I do feel like we have to put real-life implementations in place to partner with our faith to protect our kids.
Make a motion to vote.
Calling, I have a motion to all the vote. Do I have a second? I don't think we have a motion, right?
Actually, before that, I've.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I just have a question. And Pete, you may not even be able to answer this. I don't know. But can, can the state mandate a district to do that, to do anything really, without providing funding?
Funding mandates are nothing new in the state. Keeping in mind that TEA is operating under their rulemaking authority, that's different from the legislature passing a statute that the governor signs into the law. Whether or not TEA can make such a rule, it's a question of the government's terms. It's a question of the law. And the legislature has to say, it doesn't affect the law. There is no motion to the school to change the rights of the citizens.
Don't worry, I'll make the motion. Madam President, I make a motion that we amend the design to Tennyson Middle School, GW Carver Middle School, and Waco High School.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Davis. Second by Mr. Guillory. All in favor, say aye.
Can we get a roll call vote? I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure. Great. This is in favor of the amendment designed replacing the glass. Sorry, this is, let me read it specifically. Discuss and take action regarding the safety of the design for Tennyson Middle School, GW Carver, and Waco High School. So the motion would be to replace all the glass.
The motion is to make an amendment to the design of Tennyson Middle School, GW Carver Middle School, and Waco High School. That's the motion.
Did you get that, Monica?
Thank you.
I don't know. No.
Okay. Thank you. It fails two to five. And we're going on to the next item, our last item before we go into closed session, which is announcements. Thank you, Ms. Cox.
It's been a pleasure. This will be the final announcements for the calendar year of 2022. Tomorrow, we will be sending our students and staff off with an early release for students and staff in service in the afternoon. Then they'll commence winter break. Staff returns in the calendar year of 2023 on January 2nd for some training. And students will be returning on January 3rd. I want to wish each of you and each of our Waco ISD family members some rest, relaxation, and rejuvenation over this extended break. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much. And just before we go into closed session, want to wish everyone a happy holidays. I hope you get a really good time with family and friends. And then just this holiday season, just want to remind everyone, although it's a joyous occasion, to reach out to those around who this might be a harder season for. So with that, we are going to move into closed session. Waco ISD Board of Trustees will now go into closed session at 9:51. This time pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Government Code, Chapter 551.
The board has, is returning from closed session at 12:31 where no action was taken. And this meeting is adjourned.